All right, welcome to our city council meeting. We're going to do a couple of quick things before we start the meeting this evening. Are there some folks here for Parkinson's Awareness Month? Come on up. We have an official proclamation, but why don't you quickly tell us what's going to happen during the month and then we'll read our proclamation.
My name is Crisanka Christodas. I'm the coordinator for the Iowa Parkinson's Disease Information and Referral Center, which is funded by the Iowa Chapter of the American Parkinson's Disease Association. April is Parkinson's Amoritis Month, so we just want to get the proclamation signed today, just to spread a little bit more awareness about Parkinson's Disease. We estimate about 20,000 Iowans have Parkinson's Disease. And if you don't know a whole lot about it briefly, it's a brain disorder that basically there's a chemical dopamine in the brain, there's not enough of dopamine in the brain, and that results in several symptoms like tremors, rigidity, anything related to movement. And each person with Parkinson's has it a little bit differently. There is no cause currently, there is no cure, and so it impacts the quality of life for many. And with that, it is a progressive disorder, so it gets worse over time. Our organization works to do a lot of education awareness throughout the states. We have a lot of educational workshops and seminars, and we just want to continue to do that. So that's why we're here today, to just spread a little bit more awareness about Parkinson's.
The Parkinson's Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has a unique impact on each patient, as was stated just a moment ago. And whereas according to the Parkinson's Action Network, the Parkinson's Disease Foundation, the National Parkinson's Foundation, the American Parkinson's Disease Association, and the National Institute of Health, there are over 1 million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. And whereas symptoms include slowness, tremor, difficulty with balance and speaking, rigidity, cognitive, and memory problems, and whereas although new medicines and therapies may enhance life, for some time for some of the people with Parkinson's, more work is needed for a cure. And whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's Disease, and whereas a multidisciplinary approach to Parkinson's Disease care includes local wellness, support, and caregiver groups, and whereas April has been proclaimed as the Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And thank you for all you do, and let's give her a big hand and let's keep up the effort. [applause] Shirley Burgess. Shirley here? There you are. Shirley, let's talk about national service recognition. You're up.
Thank you. And let me invite my colleagues who are here with me to join me at the microphone. You know, this is our first ever Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service Volunteers, and actually that day is tomorrow. So this is an opportunity for us to lift up the contributions that are made across our community every day by about 450 national service volunteers through programs like our Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, the Foster Ramire Program, the Senior Companion Program, and the AmeriCorps program that operates in Des Moines Public Schools, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Habitat for Humanity. These volunteers, it's all about results, and results actually in five key areas. It is about education, income, and health, the environment, and even in times of disaster. And for those of us that were around in 2008, it really was the support of an enormous core of AmeriCorps volunteers that really helped us get through what we were dealing with in 2008. So Mayor County, we really appreciate you taking the spot in the team to let us look up for all of us the contributions made by volunteers here in Des Moines. Joining me today are several of our national service colleagues. In fact, I'd like to let them introduce themselves to you.
Hello, I'm Kristina. I'm the RSVP director here in Des Moines, Central Iowa.
I'm Vicki Holber Williamson with the Corporation for National and Community Service. We're the federal funding source for national service here in Iowa.
Chad Driscoll, I'm with the Iowa Commission on Volunteer Service, helping locally in the state as a program officer for our AmeriCorps program.
Adam Lowensbury, the executive director of the Commission on Volunteer Service, and we administer national service programs for the state of Iowa.
Hi, I'm Dina Johnson. I'm a state program specialist with the Corporation for National and Community Service.
My name's Eric Whitney. I'm with Des Moines Public Schools, and I am the program director for the AmeriCorps program in the school district.
I'm Elizabeth Scott, and I'm with United Way of Central Iowa.
Can everybody?
Yes.
All right. All right, our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of Iowa's character and central to how we meet our challenges, and the nation's mayors and community leaders increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city, community needs. And whereas Des Moines' 100 AmeriCorps members and 350 senior corps volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 1,000 locations across Iowa, including Des Moines, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas Iowa's 1,200 AmeriCorps members and 5,700 senior corps participants increase the impact of the organization they serve through their direct service and by recruiting and managing 24,000 additional volunteers and who serve 169,000 hours in our state. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service and the Iowa Commission on Volunteer Service share a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage our residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities and certainly to all of our communities. Let's give these people a great big hand. [applause] All right, we have to tighten up a little bit. Shirley, I'm going to give you the proclamation.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, we have one more recognition. Is Eric Buermeister in here? Eric, where are you? Come on up. Let's talk about affordable housing.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Eric Buermeister. I'm the executive director of Polk County Housing Trust Fund. April 15th begins Affordable Housing Week in Polk County. It is a time for us to talk to the community about the importance of providing affordable housing and also about the importance of the folks that live in affordable housing and the things that they bring to the community and add. So we are asking, Mayor, you will be happy to know that every one of your counterparts in Polk County is reading the same proclamation, and that, so as we know, affordable housing is not just a Des Moines issue, it is a community issue, and so we are asked, and all of the jurisdictions in Polk County have agreed, to read the same proclamation. Luke Gray from Kemmon Industries, who is one of our board members, is with us, and if councilperson Hensley would like to come forward, also one of our board members, to receive the proclamation.
Christine, do you want to read it?
No. I'm trying to make my voice clear.
All right. The proclamation reads as follows. Eric, you're supposed to be up here. Somebody can take your pictures. They'll handle it. Jeez, we got the main guy sitting down in the audience.
No, I'm not the main guy.
Okay. "Access to safe, stable, and affordable housing throughout Polk County impacts the lives of individuals and the economic vitality of our community. And whereas Polk County Housing Trust Fund is working closely with organizations who build, develop, and support affordable housing initiatives. And whereas everyone benefits with affordable housing, the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas calling attention to the needs and benefits of affordable housing is paramount to the growth of our community. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th to the 20th, 2013, is Affordable Housing Week." And let's give everybody a great big hand in knowing there's a huge need. And we have a huge group of people that are out there trying to accommodate and help all those who are in need, and I got to tell you, there's some tough times out there, and let's all work together. We'll move this. Eric, I'm going to give this to you. We're going to get started real short. All right, I think we are quickly going to move into our municipal housing agency governing board meeting. I'll ask the clerk to quickly take role, please.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Present.
Coleman?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency One Year Plan, Board Communication Number 13-183. Anybody have any questions about that from the audience? Any comments from the table here? If we have none, could we have a motion?
It's item six.
Okay. Item's moved, approving the plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the revisions to the Section 8 Administrative Plan in the public housing admissions and continued occupancy ACO policy, Board Communication Number 13-180. Anybody in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a motion? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item four, approving the conveyance of Marlin Mormon, to Marlin Mormon for the disposition sale of 1525, 1527 East 33rd Street for $28,007. Board Communication Number 13-181. Move. Any comment, anybody in the audience? Hearing none, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item five is the authorization for the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program for the following. Abdi Afra and Rabina Benou, 2417 Bennett Avenue, Board Communication Number 13-178. Item B is Perry Wright, 3000 Echshoney Avenue, that's Board Communication Number 13-162. And C is Mary Cole of 125 East 35th Court, Board Communication Number 13-164. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on any of those authorizations for those three addresses? Seeing none, could we have a motion, please? Item's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item six is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's amended fiscal year 13 and proposed fiscal year 14 operating budgets and approving certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Board Communication Number 13-163. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Hearing none, could we have a motion? Item six.
I have some comments that I just want to share, and those of you that followed our discussion this morning to the workshop will know that we have a deficit that we need to accommodate. This was a deficit that has been structural for a couple of years. We're running out of reserve funds, and to make matters worse, in the last 10 to 14 days, we learned that the sequester at the national level cut this funding significantly enough that not only do we need to cut back housing for 110 of our lowest-income families in the metro area, but we also have an additional financial gap, even after we make that cut, of several hundred thousand dollars. And it is, I know, frustrating to many of us, both the way in which this policy decision was made nationally and its impact here. And several of us were in a meeting earlier today, we talked about some alternatives. I certainly hate to commit City of Des Moines monies ultimately to this, but I'm also leery of playing with fire and risk the entire program by not approving funding. At that meeting, Rick, we asked if there was anything we could learn between then and now, and for transparency, it was a meeting that I mentioned this morning at our workshop that the mayor and Christine and I were meeting with other members of the Homeless Coordinating Council. It included a member of the Polk County Board of Supervisors, some of the staff from the Municipal Housing Agency, the Community Foundation, and from private business. You know, Mary O'Keefe represents the Greater Des Moines Partnership and downtown business interest on the Homeless Coordinating Council. That's who was at the meeting. Rick, do you have anything you want to add to that discussion and what you may have learned since then?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, two points. Number one, I haven't had a chance since we concluded that meeting to do any follow-up work with United Way or others in terms of finding a source for the funds. But secondly, and from a procedural standpoint, I want you to understand that you're sitting now as the Des Moines Housing Agency Governing Board. You're not sitting as the city council. Decisions about sources of money that would come from a city account into this program should be made when you are acting as a city council. So however you want to proceed is entirely up to you, but when you get around to voting on it, my suggestion, subject to Mr. Lester's counter, would be that you take that up, and there is an extra item for that discussion to take place at that time. An option you have is to go ahead and approve this and let the budget be certified, or let us certify to HUD that we've approved a budget, but then talk about the financial gap funding or lack thereof that you'd like the council to do when you take up that extra item at the end of the regular agenda.
Rick, can I just clarify this logistically, because if we act now and certify a budget that calls for an equal amount of revenue and resources, then we've really put ourselves in a bind when we act as the council later in the evening.
To approve the resources.
If we don't approve the resources.
Well, Mr. Coleman, I might ask Scott to help us define exactly the action you're being asked to take here, but I believe you are certifying to HUD that you have a budget. So it's a little bit different than how we certify a budget to the state, and I think that gives you some latitude. My policy issue for you, and I know you talked about it, and I know you have some different thoughts around the table, my policy issue for you is that you're acting with the knowledge that there is a shortfall there, and I just want you to be sensitive to that fact, that the day will come and that shortfall has to be addressed, or the impacts of the program will be profound. So I think you can go ahead and approve this. I don't think you have to fix the problem right now, but I think when you get to that other item, you'll be able to talk about what position you want to take as a council with respect to it. Scott, can you add or subtract to that?
Actually, that's Scott Sanders, Finance Director, City Manager of Council. That's accurate, that you do need to act as a housing agency first, and they do need to have a certified budget by April 15th. And understand that it is different in that the certification is notifying HUD that the board has approved a budget. They do not look at the amounts, per se, and limit you to those. It is an act of approving it that they're looking for.
So even though we know that we have a deficit that we've been talking about, that will be dealt with at the end, in the council meeting, the certification of this budget will show that there is a deficit. Is that correct?
That there's a need for the local contribution, same thing.
A need for the local contribution, okay.
So essentially what we're passing is we're saying we have a budget.
On the housing side, yes.
On the housing side.
Without reference to being balanced or not.
Right. And understand, as the housing board, you still have flexibility throughout the fiscal year to make whatever decision the housing board needs to make for the best interest of the long term. And I'm telling, you know, because of the deficits that have been given to the board through federal funding cuts, that is the whole gamut of can the program continue to exist? Do we need partners? The whole solution options are available to you all throughout the year. It's not like there's a contract that the funds are guaranteed in any way.
Well, Mayor, if it's all right and everybody's comfortable, I'll make the motion and we can discuss it additionally, but I would move this so long as the record reflected that the source of funds for the local contribution has not yet been identified, and, you know, we intend to move forward with this plan for a budget. This budget doesn't start until October 1st, is that right?
July 1st.
July 1st, because it's on our schedule.
It's on our, basically, that's what makes something.
So by the time that starts, we should have that resolved, and we may make progress on that today, but I'd want the record to reflect that we passed this budget as a framework for the 2014 budget, knowing that the local contribution has to be defined.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Chris, is it your intention that when we get to the extra item, that we'll have this discussion then about how to deal with that shortfall in terms of our own city budget?
Yes.
Yes. That would be my intention.
As long as that's...
With that understanding, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item seven is a bit of good news, which is accepting an award from the Iowa Finance Authority, IFA Home Investment Partnership Program for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, TBRA, a Section 8 waiting list, clients list, $1,100,000. Sponsor, I sponsored it. Mr. Manager, do you want to have somebody, or do you want to quickly explain it? Item seven.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we learned late last week that IFA had granted our approval of a grant award. This is great news. It's state home money, I believe it is, and the amount is $1.1 million. It is for the IFA Home Investment Partnership Program for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, and it's good news for us. And by the way, it does correlate a little bit to the action you just talked about in terms of the Section 8 program, and it helps us a little bit in that regard, and we recommend it to you. Doug Romig could certainly add more details if you like.
That's good news.
All right. Anybody in the audience, any questions? Seeing none?
I'll move, item seven.
Item seven's been moved. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn as Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Prior to starting our city council meeting tonight, we have our own councilmember, Bob Mahaffey, who has a message. We would ask that anybody who would participate with us to stand at this time, and after we will get started with our council meeting.
I've chosen for our invocation tonight a short prayer from meditations for meetings, if you all pray with me. God of heaven and earth, you are the creator and source of every blessing. We pray that you will bring peace to all of our brothers and sisters of this world. Give us lives filled with wisdom, guided with respect for all. Help us to reject greed and learn to share all the good things that you provide for us. Amen.
All right, we'll call the Des Moines City Council meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Item two is a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
All right, in this...
When you get to the consent calendar, I'll be talking.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda, which tonight is item three through 37. These are items which are on our agenda but are enacted as one roll-call vote without separate discussion unless somebody either from the city council or from the audience pulls one of these items for further discussion. Tonight, we have 4B. Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item five, councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Item five, councilmember Moore votes no. Item six, councilmember Moore votes no. Item 16C, councilmember Hensley votes no. And item 26, councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items anybody would have to, like to have pulled for further discussion? Again, these are items three through 37. I will note also, and the manager may want to speak to it, item 32E has been withdrawn. Also withdrawn is 4M. 26I is corrected, subject to approval of the final contract by the city manager and the legal department. And item 32A has been withdrawn by the Public Works Department for further study. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just had meant to include 32E and the items to be withdrawn, and you just added it, so that concern has been addressed. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move the balance. I'll move the balance.
Okay, the balance has been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I do have a question about one item polled, if I could.
Sure.
The Greenwood Lounge is the application that was polled, is that right, Diane? Is that M? Did I read that right?
Yes, you did.
Does that expire between now and our next meeting?
No. Don't they get to keep it until? Yeah, they get to keep it. They're coming in at May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Can you get it clarified, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, so they don't lose their license, I just, in the interim, by not acting to-
All right, that takes us to item five, which is a consideration of Class C liquor licenses for Lot 33 Cafe Bar and Lounge at 3701 Ingersoll Avenue. The zoning department recommends denial. Mrs. Hensley.
I support and will recommend denial as well as on this particular item, but it does tie into the question that councilmember Coleman is discussing regarding the Greenwood. We really need to have several issues dealt with in that area. We've got the Cafe, 33 Cafe Bar, you've got the Greenwood Lounge, and you've got the Ingersoll Dinner Theater, and there needs to be a site plan that's been appropriately developed and approved, which has not been forthcoming, and we need to get their attention that this needs to be done. So I support the recommendation here. It will force them having to get that done in order for us then to deal with the Greenwood Lounge, because they'll have the same issue.
I'm here for item number five for the-
Okay.
All right, come forward.
Good evening, Councilman. I'm Raj Devan, resident of 7803 Cottonwood Lane, West Des Moines, Iowa. I purchased into this business in 2012 in August, and then the zoning is denying my liquor license based on the required parking and a site improvement, which is an ongoing problem with the landlord, Mr. Andrew Lee. I signed a lease, and I have been asking the landlord to make the necessary changes, and that he has refused to go, so my hands are tied. So-
Well, we're hoping that this will untie your hands.
Okay.
I mean, we're trying to help you, because you'll get to come back in, is my understanding.
Okay.
So we want to send a message that we're denying this, to force him to come in and sit down and work with the staff.
Okay, so I can-
That's what we're trying to do, but you understand it's going to take a little bit longer.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, that's our end game goal and what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, all right. So you guys are working on the plan with them?
Mr. Lee has contacted staff, is my understanding, and we're hopeful that it will be dealt with in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, my motion is to deny as recommended by zoning department, item number five.
Can they come back whenever they want? Was there a time limit?
Seven, yes.
All right, it takes us to item 26, which is amendment number one to the fiscal year 2010 Explosive Ordinance Disposal Grant between Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Division, IHSEM-D, and the City of Des Moines, in approval to allow the chief of police to sign any further agreements to the 2010 Homeland Security Grant reallocation of funds. Council communication number 13-166. Is the chief in here?
She lies in the left.
She's on, I can speak to the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Moore wants to speak, I think, first.
Well, I'm, I wish this was Part A and Part B. I'm fully in favor of accepting these grant funds, but when you read our blue letter under the agenda heading, the end of it says to allow the chief of police to sign any further amendments to the 2010 Homeland Security Grant reallocation of funds as proxy for the mayor. And I don't know if, first of all, if I were Frank, I know I'd be questioned, and I don't feel good that we have any department heads signing anything as the proxy for the mayor. I think we should know these funds are coming out and what they're being spent for, but I'll leave that up to Frank.
Arnie Corruth, I'm the Budget Director for the Des Moines Police Department. There will have been a correction on the agenda that would have addressed that, and it said for the mayor or city manager to approve, so that adjustment was made.
Is that adjustment-
Are you fine with that?
I had a short conversation earlier with the chief, and I think she and I have an understanding that we've worked together before and we'll keep doing it.
I'll move 26.
All right, that takes us to item 38. Item 38 is approving preliminary terms of agreement with the Union Pacific Railway for the vacation of three segments of Street Right-Away at Hull Avenue, Scott Avenue, and Southeast 34th Street crossings. Council communication number 13-165. A is setting date of hearing on the vacation of the three segments of the Street Right-Away for railway crossing closures at the Hull Avenue, Scott Avenue, and Southeast 34th Street crossings, and that will be June 10th of 2013. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? All right, we have one person here. How many, how many folks are thinking about speaking here? Can I see a show of hands? How many we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11?
Fourteen.
How many did you get?
Fourteen.
Fourteen? Okay, council, I'm sorry?
Do you want Phil to go first?
Yeah, we'll let Phil go first, but we ought to figure out how we'll handle the discussion.
Three minutes.
Three minutes each?
Three would be.
Okay. Phil, do you want to start? Once we get started, we'll ask kind of everybody to come over here so we kind of get a feeling how far we're getting down the list, and hopefully have everybody say what they need to say. We'd appreciate it if it's all new information, that we don't, we're not repetitive of the same information, and that'll help us move along and get all the ideas on the table, and so that, as you can imagine, over the next number of weeks, as we move to this June hearing, we're going to have to meet with a lot of people, residents, businesses, and of course, the railway. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil Delafield, Community Development Department, and I'm here just for a brief update on where we are and the process that we've gone through at this point, so if you'll indulge me for just a moment. A lot of process to date. We've had quite a little bit of involvement here that started back in 2010, where the city contacted the Union Pacific Railroad regarding blockages that were occurring throughout the system. During 2010 and 2011, the Union Pacific Railroad started to review these issues. The blockage concerns, the ADM expansion came up at that time, as, as did the freight rail capacity issues. There were technical discussions that occurred with staff and the UP during 2011 and 2012, and then during 2012, the first proposal was advanced to the city. There were neighborhood meetings that occurred in the summer of 2012, and a project evaluation, and some modifications took point, took place at that point. In November 2012, there was a neighborhood meeting at the Botanical Center for the community, and then the information was presented to you at council workshop in November 2012. January 3rd, it went before the Plan on Zoning Commission, and again, January 28th to the city council, where you asked us to reevaluate and modify the project yet again. That resulted in a community workshop, a council workshop on March 11th, and a community meeting on March 21st. So as you can see, there's been a lot of public input, there's been a lot of involvement on staff and the UP. We are trying to balance the needs, the needs of the community in terms of mobility, neighborhood quality, and the opportunities for neighborhood and economic growth. To date, the mitigation improvements, the updated costs and the estimates total a little bit more than $2 million, of which Union Pacific Railroad is, is funding about a million and a half, and then state grant at $500,000. I have the maps available for those improvements. I believe you're all very familiar with those. These maps have not changed, but they are available if we should need them. These are the improvements that are proposed in the southeast area, along Southeast 34th and Southeast 36th. And again, the significant change in this area is that the southeast 36th crossing is to remain open, southeast 34th would be blocked. There would be an emergency access road prepared and paving of Laurel Hill Road. There would be turn lanes that were added at Dean Avenue to help facilitate traffic flow at that location. The Hull Avenue area, these are the warning signals that are, are being proposed to help identify when the tracks are being blocked by trains, so that motorists would know when to use alternate routes. And these are the Hull Avenue area improvements that we have advanced thus far. This includes the cul-de-sac on Hull, some traffic calming mechanisms on Hull Avenue, and some improvements along the, the street, including new paving and street trees. There would be a widened portion of Hull to facilitate truck movement, widen Dixon Hull turning, turning lanes, and then the Euclid Dixon left turn lanes would be improved. This is just a closer look at the improvements along the neighborhood. The idea here is to discourage truck traffic from this area, as well as provide a barrier and a break from the industrial areas to the north. And then there are warning signs proposed on Hubble at East University, and these are, again, to warn of track blockages by trains. So what we're trying to set, give you here is it's been a sense of community. We have a community that has grown together, a mix of parts that have grown together. The infrastructure has grown, the industry has grown, the neighborhoods have grown, and now rail needs have grown, and we're trying to balance all those issues. So I guess this is what the question, the crux of the question is, what is the future of the, of the rail in this area, and whether some sort of future planning effort is, is necessary to try to balance all these competing needs? Industry and rail, neighborhood interaction, and economic development opportunities. And we see this, if, if a planning effort is to advance, it would be a partnership of all those parties. So that's where we are today, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Bob?
Phil, when you say future planning, are we looking at the overall picture then of the area, or are we looking at future planning of the railroads, or a combined effect of both of them together?
Mr. Mahaffey, I think it would have to be a combined of all those aspects. What, what the needs are of the community from a neighborhood perspective, from the business community, and what opportunities that rail presents for growth, what they need from the rail as, as far as helping their growth, and what the community as a whole needs in order to have a more livable community.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? All right, let's begin. Anybody that wants to speak, let's come over here. There may be some folks that want to speak that are reapers, business interests, or any of those folks. We ought to alternate some of those back and forth a little bit, so we get a little perspective here. All right, and as everybody comes up, I'll ask to give your name and address and who you're representing. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Mainwaring. I'm with Union Pacific Railroad out of Omaha, Nebraska. I have appeared in front of you several times at these meetings that Phil mentioned, and I spoke at length about the project then, so I'm going to keep my comments tonight very brief. We began this process really with two goals. One is to maintain the best quality rail service for our Des Moines area customers, and secondly, to minimize the inconveniences for our neighbors. After two years of analysis and review modification, we agree with the city that this solution is going to help solve both of those goals. The plan addresses city and east side concerns about traffic delays and resolves rail capacity concerns. By closing the crossing at Hull, we reduce delays at east side crossings to the south of Hull. By closing southeast 34th Street, we provide additional capacity to handle current rail traffic for Des Moines area customers. These two closures provide enough additional rail capacity to allow Des Moines to participate in future expansion of existing businesses and development of new industry. Good rail service is really critical for communities that want to attract new business. Rail is the most economical, most fuel-efficient, least polluting of all freight transportation modes, and it's supported with private funds, not taxpayer dollars. Just in Des Moines, Union Pacific takes thousands of trucks off the road on a daily basis. Iowa communities that don't have enough rail service are spending millions of dollars to build rail facilities. By proceeding with these closures, Des Moines will protect and improve its rail infrastructure with no taxpayer investment. It will also address longstanding concerns about traffic delays on the east side. There's been a lot of discussion about the need for a longer-term, broader study of rail infrastructure in Des Moines. Union Pacific is 100% behind those efforts. We cannot predict with certainty what our future business is going to look like. The rail industry responds to the national economy, and we've all learned in recent years how unpredictable that can be. But based on our experience in the last decade, and based on studies that have been done by the USDOT and a lot of other experts, we can predict and say with confidence that our business will increase. In fact, Des Moines is already experiencing some of that increase. The proposal in front of you tonight addresses the current rail capacity deficit in Des Moines. Approval will let us begin to talk about the future rail serve development in Des Moines, and we do look forward to participating with the city in those conversations. We appreciate the staff's effort on this and the council's consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hi, my name is Chris Riley, and I'm representing ADM from Decatur, Illinois, and Des Moines is one of the premier plants in ADM's North American network of soybean crushing assets. Given its geographic location and access to the railroads, it is strategically positioned to efficiently ship products to domestic markets both locally and across the United States, as well as to international export markets. As a result, the Des Moines location will continue to be a strong candidate for future investments. However, logistical efficiency is more important than ever in our business, as we face increasing competition from competitors, not only in our business in areas of the United States, but from growing crushing industries in South America and China as well. Thus, it is imperative for the future growth and for the long-term survival of ADM in Des Moines that we are able to continue to improve our logistical efficiencies and hence our competitiveness. ADM has invested between $30 and $40 million in this facility over the last three to five years, and in that time, our capacity has increased 30%. The rail traffic has also increased approximately 20% over this time period, with 500 rail cars entering and exiting the facility each month. We process 1.4 million tons of soybeans each year, produced on about 5,000 farms, accounting for more than $700 million in today's commodity prices. Our most recent property taxes for this location amounted to approximately $1 million, and the 155 employees and contractors who work here account for a payroll of approximately $9.7 million. Safety is of the utmost concern to ADM. Each employee and contractor go through what's called values-based safety training, and with the safety issues at at-grade crossings today, our engineers that take the cars back and forth over that crossing at Hull watch cars almost every day go around the gates that are closed, and that, thank God, there have been no accidents as of this date. This is an important location for ADM to continue to have opportunities for expansion with the $3 million project ready to proceed, depending on tonight's vote. If not, we are capped at an investment perspective, and then it will just be the upkeep of the facility from then on. This is a great city, and ADM is proud to be a part of it, and I thank you for your consideration.
My name is Alan Williams. I'm a project manager with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. It's been my privilege to work for the State of Iowa in economic development for 16 years, during which time I've successfully worked with over 130 projects. Most of those projects had no need for rail, but those projects did need rail service. It was a critical factor in their site selection process. Example that you may be familiar with would be Barilla, the Italian pasta manufacturing company that ultimately chose a location in Ames. They did actively consider sites, rail serve sites here in Des Moines, for a variety of reasons. They ultimately chose Ames. One of the major components of that decision would be the excellent access they had to the Union Pacific rail line there. One trend we have seen in economic development in recent years is more heavy industry. Heavy industry has a need for rail service because of the economies of scale and hauling freight traffic. Those types of manufacturing jobs are what you would call middle-class, blue-collar jobs, the kind that are critical, critical to the fabric of any community. But perhaps more important than recruiting new manufacturing companies here is to take care of the industries you already have here. Most of the new jobs and new investment we see at the state come from existing industries. You're very fortunate to have a number of outstanding companies here in the Des Moines area, which do rely upon- area, which do rely upon rail service. Companies such as ADM, Bridgestone, Cargill, others have many options. Every year, they actively evaluate their current locations, not only in Iowa, but the United States and around the world. And I've learned in my 16 years that capital goes where it is welcome. They often perform evaluations on determinations of the effectiveness, the cost of a facility. Important component of that is efficient and cost-effective rail transportation. So from the state perspective, we're in support of this initiative. I think that another aspect that maybe was touched upon is perhaps the less congestion from traffic and overall savings in fuel. A rail car, and the rail traffic hauls four times as much as a semi-trailer, and as a result, uses about 75% less fuel and 75% less greenhouse. So I guess in closing, I would encourage you to give active consideration to the proposal from Union Pacific and to take care of the industries that are here. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Mike Ralston. I'm with the Iowa Association of Business and Industry. We're located at 400 East Court Avenue here in Des Moines, and our organization represents about 1,400 companies, and they employ over 300,000 Iowans. I'm going to take your advice, Mr. Mayor, and try to cut out the parts of my remarks that have been covered by others. But I do want to say, there are a lot of companies that do business in Des Moines that are members of ABI. We're proud of that. We're proud that Union Pacific, ADM, those are two of them. But I'm really here to represent the other Des Moines companies that are members of ABI. They rely on rail, both to get the product in and to get product out. They see this project as an investment in the infrastructure of Des Moines that needs to happen. I would say when we talked about this around our board table, there's been a lot of great comments about the way the city has approached this, the thoughtful view that city staff has had, that you all have had, that the city's taken its time to do it right. That can be frustrating for businesses, but in the end, it's the best way to go. So congratulations on that. What we want to talk about really is the big-picture view that this project really involves. Certainly, there have been all kinds of views expressed about it. Like everybody else, we respect all those views. You're talking about employers here that are great folks. It's been already outlined, the millions of dollars that Union Pacific and others that are talking today invest in this state when it comes to wages and taxes and vendor goods and those sorts of things. And so that doesn't mean that those companies should get any special treatment. In fact, I know that Union Pacific doesn't want any special treatment. But what it does document is that these are good employers, ones that we want to have in our state, ones that create a lot of jobs. The thing I'd say that I'm not sure has been addressed tonight is that if nothing, if this project isn't approved and nothing happens, there are still going to be increasing concerns at these crossings. There are still going to be traffic issues and safety issues. What we have here is an opportunity to leverage some private investment. You know, UP is not coming here asking for a big local handout. In fact, they're the major funder by far of this project. And so let's, I know our folks think this is an opportunity for the city, and I'm talking about Des Moines companies. This is an opportunity for the city to leverage that private investment and get something done. I guess I'd say that the ABI members in Des Moines are primarily manufacturers. Manufacturers rely on rail as a cost-effective way to do things. You've heard about that already. We're talking about a lot of jobs and investment here, and this project provides for those jobs to stay and provides for opportunity for increased jobs and economic activity in Des Moines, and that's a great thing. You've got a lot to think about. Thank you very, very much for this opportunity to speak in behalf of this project. Thanks for your consideration, too.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. My name's Lauren Smith. I live at 1441 East Tiffin Avenue. I'm here just representing myself. I have a concern about this closure because of some of the alternate routes that you guys are wanting us to take. There are reasons that we don't take those alternate routes now. Like Guthrie, you have speed bumps down that street. I'm sorry, I'm an east side worker. I have an east side beater car. I can't afford to replace my suspension every two years so that I can go down a street that has speed bumps on it. You want me to go down East 14th? Okay, fine, but it doesn't go where I need it to go. So now I've got to spend more money and gas to get where I need to go. The only solution this, the only answer this gives us here is we're closing the street for the railroad company. We're not doing anything for the residents. In all due respect, I don't think that the community meetings were well advertised so that people knew what was going on. I didn't know about this until two weeks ago, when it was printed up in the newspaper. I think that you guys need to get more feedback from the community on what's going on, because I think that you'll find out that people really don't want this road closed. Thank you.
Okay. Lauren, thanks.
My name is Don Kern. I live at 2912 Dean Avenue, and all I've heard is what the city of Des Moines and the citizens of Des Moines is going to do for the railroad. I haven't heard nothing, what the railroad's going to do for the citizens. They're not going to, they're not going to pay my property tax when my property gets lowered. They're not, they're not going to do that, but I'm still going to have to pay the same amount even though my property is losing value. And as far as ADM, they say they're going to expand, but we want to take trucks off the street. But then, if they expand, that's going to put more trucks on the street instead of taking them off. And I don't, I think we need to step back and take another look at this, and if nothing else happens, I think we need to get a hold of our congressmen, senators, and representatives and have them look, because on 34th Street, south of Dean and north of Scott, that street is blocked all day long by the train. Now, the reason why they're giving us 36th Street back, which is already ours, is because it's very seldom blocked. If they, if they take that train and block Van Dallure Road or Murray Street down there, something's going to happen. The city of Des Moines ain't going to let that happen. But they can block the street that I helped pay for, which the people from Nebraska or Illinois or Minnesota hasn't put a damn dime in this. It's us citizens of Des Moines that's paying the freight. And I came here a long time ago. I was here before Union Pacific was ever here. Thank you.
My name is Cherie Murchis, and I'm here today representing the Keep Hall Avenue Open Campaign. I live at 2904 East 22nd Street, just off Hall Avenue. I'd like to start my comments today by saying that for the east and northeast side of Des Moines, this vote today is one of the most significant votes in recent history, impacting the sustainability of east side neighborhoods and businesses. It will be a significant chapter in your legacy as a community leader. It could launch the Des Moines community as a model case study of how a shared vision creates shared prosperity. Supporting Union Pacific's proposal will allow UP to remain entrenched in 20th-century behavior: the arrogance of entitlement to take public space, winner-take-all. What does that look like exactly? First, UP insisted on taking a public right-of-way and offering nothing in return. The $2 million improvement to the street and turning lane only benefited the railway and ADM. Then, when asked to go back to the drawing board and come back with a better proposal, they offered to build a sugar-coated barrier, repave, and plant a few trees. This phony second offer was an insult. I have collected over 500 petition signatures. If I had another two months, I could get 500 more. The signatures include businesses along Delaware and East 14th Street corridor. I've talked with people across the entire east side and north side community that Hall Avenue connects us with. This phony offer has boiled people's blood more than anything. Furthermore, if you as a council support this proposal by AP, there are potential imminent consequences, the kind that we as a community and an emerging urban center should not allow to happen. How this vote breaks out could ignite old rivalries: east side versus west side, lead township against the world perceptions. And on a larger scale, your vote to accept UP's proposals will reflect whose well-being you are truly interested in. UP's way of framing this issue is a false choice in a zero-sum game, necessitating winners and losers. It does not have to be this way. However, let's shift our thinking for a moment. What if we adopted a new paradigm, a strategy based on 21st-century design solutions that create win-win solutions? What if the brown zone that includes the rail yard becomes a seamless green space that connects neighborhoods and businesses and gives visual appeal to a space that would encourage more business enterprise? Other communities are doing this. Or will we refuse to allow the connectivity and amenities that Pleasant Hill can offer and watch our industrial space become abandoned? But what if a 20th-century, 21st-century design solution accommodated rail service, cars, trucks, pedestrians, and bicycles, and ended the tug-of-war between competing interests? Has the city leadership become so intimidated by the old threats, "We'll leave town, we'll take our business elsewhere," that you fail to see that the table has already shifted? We are in a position to communicate expectations that reflect 21st-century thinking, one of shared visions and shared prosperity. Members of the council, let's not repeat history and ignite old rivalries, create winners and losers, and fail to seize this moment as a moment of opportunity. We are asking that you open the door and let the east side in on this new frontier of growth and development. Thank you very much.
My name is Suzie Forkner, 2924 East 22nd Street. I oppose this closure. Anyone that lives near the tracks knows the trains will be there once in a while. Right now, we have the option for waiting for the train or going around the long way. But if you dead-end our neighborhoods, we have no option. Union Pacific said this is for staging their trains. There used to be plenty of room for staging trains north of Des Moines, between Des Moines and Ankeny, until they tore up the tracks. Union Pacific said this is a 10-year plan, so what happens in 10 years? Make the whole east side an island cut off from the rest of the city? Union Pacific said this will bring hundreds of jobs to the city. It will not, because Union Pacific will bring its own employees in, and once they are done with these jobs, they will leave Des Moines. The $2 million will only cover what Union Pacific and ADM want to do with the streets. It does nothing to improve the neighborhoods or the Des Moines east side community. Union Pacific keeps calling it a cul-de-sac on Hall Avenue, which literally means dead-end. Why can't Union Pacific and ADM fix the tracks on Hall, have all semis use Dixon, and the city change Hall Avenue to car-traffic-only? It is ADM's trucks that tear up and break down the tracks and the street on Hall. I go to church, my daughter's, and my mother-in-law's house using Hall, and they are all west of the tracks. Right now, I have two stop signs and one stoplight. If this dead-end happens, I will have one stop sign, four stoplights, which will not be a faster way to get to my family in case of an emergency. If we have a heavy rainfall, I will not be able to use Euclid because it floods under the train trestle. Then I would have to use Guthrie and backtrack to their homes. Mr. Mahaffey, I believe you have forgotten where you come from. As far as I know, you have never sat down with just the neighbors affected by these dead-ends. You have never asked them how they feel about the dead-ends or how we could come to a good solution for all parties involved. Any meeting we have had with Union Pacific and ADM, you have always sat with their representatives. You are for big business, not the small independent businesses. There are about 30 small businesses that will be affected. If you choose to dead-end these streets, what will happen to those businesses? Some will close forever, others will move to Altoona, Ankeny, Pleasant Hill, or West Des Moines. Not only will Des Moines lose business, but also property and sales tax from those businesses and their employees. Then what will the city do? Probably raise property taxes on the neighborhoods affected, with still no improvements to those neighborhoods. Right now, one side of my own street has been crumbling for over 15 years, down to where you can see the rebar, and yet the city has done nothing to fix it. The city has been out several times, looked at it, and done nothing. We also have Eastgate sitting there empty forever, and yet the city gave a big business a big tax credit to bring business back to that area. The trickle-down theory does exist. It just makes the blue-collar worker work harder and longer hours, while the white-collar worker and big business say, "Oh, well, we'll just find some other schmuck to work for us for minimum wage." You are supposed to be representing the citizens of the east side, not international multi-billion-dollar corporations. There is an old saying, "You can't fight City Hall." Hopefully, City Hall will fight for its citizens.
City Council, my name is Dana Newkirk, and I hope you can hear me. I have a hearing loss, so is my voice loud enough?
Yep.
Okay. First off, I'd like to repeat the words of somebody I admire very much, because I grew up much like him. I grew up in a working-class family. We were one of the poorest in town, but I was rich in public goods. I went to a public school. I went to play ball in a good public park. I had access to a good public library, drove down a good public highway, and went to a good public college, all made possible by people I never met. There was an unwritten bargain among the generations. We didn't all get the same deal, but we did get civilization. And what I'd like to tell you now is that I grew up on the east side. I grew up fairly poor, working-class family, family involved in the printing field. Everybody worked in my family. My mother and father, in order for me to cross the railroad tracks when I was a small child, had to cut down the weeds for two years with scythes themselves, because the city and the railroad would not agree as to who owned the railroad property all along the tracks. So they would cut down that area for about three or four blocks by hand after work every day. So I have my suspicions as to what we're going to be given, first of all. I also have, oh, my dad is over here, sitting right here, the man that's just about asleep, but he's, he's sitting here, and he cut down those weeds for about approximately two I also have a lot of family members that live on the east side, and they are older, and they sometimes need ambulance service to and from the hospital. Or when I take them to the doctor's office, and I or my father are usually the people that have to drive them back and forth, and with the traffic as it is, sometimes we're stopped and halted just to go to a doctor's office for two or three hours. Yes, that's how bad it is there. We don't like to take the free way, as you might want us to, because we're older. And I have lupus, and I have muscle problems, but I'm the person that has to take my family and my family members to and from doctor's offices, because I have about three people in my family that are disabled, and I am also fairly disabled. Inequality matters when this happens. Inequality to getting to the library, inequality to getting to doctor's office, inequality that the ambulance, if some of my family members might need it, might not be able to get to and from in time to save the life of a family member of mine. You say maybe they don't deserve it because they're working-class people. Well, I and some of these people here beg to differ with you. We're human beings. We wish to be treated fairly. It's been a long time since we've been treated fairly over on the east side. We've had hospitals closed down. We haven't had any shopping malls. We haven't had barely any upkeep, and we're asked to take on a small amount of money of 30, 30 tiny trees to beautify the area. No new overpasses. Of course, they claim that they will, but the money allotted sensibly will not cover that. It won't cover the geographical study to see if we could put in another overpass.
Dana?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll ask everybody to please try to keep your comments to above three minutes as the council.
Does the bell mean three minutes, or?
The bell means three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Doriano Rossi. I'm at 2416 Hall Avenue, so I'm speaking for myself as a resident. I'll start with a few things. January 3, 2013, as you know, the plan in zoning commission was against this by a vote of 5 to 8 or 8 to 5, and certainly there have been some new proposals since then. So that's our starting point, that city council is going something, against something, the zoning, plan of zoning is already voted against, even though there were revisions. Now, if you go back to Council Communication 13-165, I'm not sure if that was in March, there's a couple of items in there. Question 5 talks about the line that was taken out in Ankeny. Now, my understanding with the line that was taken out in Ankeny is because rail was insufficient to do what John Deere needed to do. Now, maybe rail will be sufficient, maybe not, but you're taking a chance of proving this for ADM when in other situations rail has not worked for other manufacturers. I also want to just interject here. Manufacturers who use blue-collar workers, which many of our kids who live on this street now will become blue-collar workers. You're talking about dead-ending Hall Avenue between Second Avenue and 20- You're talking about dead-ending Hall Avenue between Second Avenue and 29th, a continuous street. The reason I bring that up is this study also, I think 13-165, ignored the fact that Good Rail is not a neighborhood school. Therefore, the decision by the council or the communication to you that Sid, there are no Good Rail kids outside of their boundary is incorrect. Good Rail does not have a boundary. Any neighborhood kids within a half-mile go to Good Rail. What this means is kids west of the tracks are coming over here, the Hall Avenue tap, whatever area that's called. Also, as you know, this used to be the East High School District. I know where my Eastsiders are. But ten years ago, the East High School District changed from a 235 dividing line over to Hubble Avenue, and that is all north. So all of my kids on Hall Avenue now go straight down that way to get to north, straight down Hall Avenue. Here's our alternates. You want to send your people at 7:30 in the morning, at 5 o'clock at night, down East 24th to Guthrie, hit all the bumps first of all, but before you get there, you're not going to be able to turn onto Guthrie Avenue. It's a mess. In the winter, you want to send us over to Euclid. I can't get up East 25th Street, I can't even get up Hall Avenue as I go past Fairmount Park, okay? Not going to work. You've got to keep that road open. And then finally, it occurred to me, you're not taking into consideration anybody who lives northeast of Des Moines. Those folks in Brook Run have -- I already said I can't make it down Euclid because of the winter and the weather. Euclid is slower, much slower than Hall Avenue. I got to get a kid to Good Rail, I got to get a kid to North High, I've got to get downtown to work, which thankfully my employer has invested in downtown, or else I wouldn't have a job. However, all these people are clogging up Euclid Avenue. So you're sending people in two routes that are not good alternate routes. These people coming down Hall Avenue to the southwest are clogging up Euclid, and I just wish you'd really think about this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Peroli. I work for ADM in Des Moines, and I'm offering support for the proposed closure of the Hall Avenue crossing and the related road infrastructure improvements. ADM supported the city's civil engineering and traffic study on this project to ensure that the overall impact to the community will be positive. The traffic study has shown that more than 22,000 vehicles will be positively affected by the planned changes, while only 2,200 a day would be rerouted. Infrastructure improvements like these are extremely expensive, and this is a great opportunity for the community and local residents to gain a long-term benefit from the private investment through improved roads and intersections coupled with less wait times. UP is offering several million dollars to make improvements to roads, signals, and intersections that are otherwise not required, and with the exception of the Euclid-Dixon left-turn signal, will not be made if they're to be paid for with public funding. In addition, millions in private investment and projects are related to the success of the vote tonight by the City Council. A significant portion of this amount is related to the labor, design, and construction of these projects. That means that if the project gains City Council approval and the investments are made, there's money that will be invested locally, and that revenue will stay here. If this fails, then those investments will not be made. The reason that the production of soybeans from 5,000 farms from across the state of Iowa are delivered to ADM in Des Moines every year is because of the price levels and service that we provide. The single highest component in getting ag commodities from the field to the end-user's table is freight. Through improved rail and truck infrastructure, we are able to reduce freight costs. Efficient rail access to destination markets to which our products flow equates to a more viable business environment at origin. That means that projects such as this are not only improve traffic flow for Des Moines residents, but add sustainability and long-term economic impact to local businesses and farmers across the state. The social and economic impact of infrastructure improvements and investments is large and far-reaching, and that's why ADM supports this project. In 1938, there was a grain elevator built on the northeast side of Des Moines. The only thing there was cornfields and a railroad track. In the late 1950s, we began to process soybeans there, and 75 years later, ADM operates one of the premier soybean-crushing facilities in what has become our plant in Des Moines. This project is an opportunity to make a long-term, well-researched, and all-encompassing infrastructure investment. If it doesn't happen, there are millions in potential private investment in the metro area that will be lost. Now, last week, there was a tragic rail-passenger-vehicle collision that occurred on a multi-rail crossing in western Iowa. There was a train parked on one track, and the gates were down and the lights were flashing. The vehicle proceeded around the gates and was hit by an oncoming train on the second set of tracks, which had been hidden from view by the first train. Two children were killed, and their mother, the vehicle driver, was taken to the hospital with serious injuries. A local resident commented that cars are often seen driving around the gates. Even with safety equipment in place, accidents still occur. We believe that moving forward with the closure of the crossing at Hall Avenue and the associated road improvements is in the best interest of our local economy and the safety of the residents of Des Moines. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Cynthia Raymond, 416 Southeast 36th Street, Laurel Hill Neighborhood. I maintain that all the estimates that are being made about how much each individual street is going to be blocked and all this is just all well and good, but if you're going to choose a street that's going to be blocked and have it say that by 2040 it'll be 60% blocked, well, that means in 2040, 27 years from now, I could still use it 40%, I think that all of these improvements are terrific. But let's make them before we close any routes, find out how they affect the neighborhoods, make sure that the flow is exactly what you're thinking it will be, because it may not even need to be done. It's going to be harder to open them once this is done, and I just don't think that it's necessary. Don't rush into something that you can't change. If it becomes such a bother to people that they can't wait for a little while, I mean, I'm an Eastsider, I choose the 1, 2, 3 route, the most optional, the second if that's blocked, and the third if I'm in a rush and don't even want to go to the other two. But usually, that third one is longer, further away, more gas, more time, I mean, in a reverse order there. I guess I've done it since I was 16 years old. I'm 62, I can still do it, you know, for the next 27 years, God permitting. But don't close something that is usable 40% of the time in 2040, because up until that time, it'll be 50% of the time, it'll be 75% of the time. There are a lot of our intersections that are not blocked for extended periods of time right now. Don't block those streets just because. Make sure that you're using your brain about, you know, what could be. Estimates don't always come true, and in those 27 years, something may happen. New innovations could happen. Somebody just comes up with an idea that nobody thought about before, and that could make the whole thing work together like Sharice is talking about. But, you know, don't take steps that you can't reverse. And people say, "Well, you can reverse that." No, you can't. It just won't work if you try. Leave them open, let us use them whatever percentage of the time they're not blocked. It's just common sense. Thank you.
Marlon Morland, 3320 Kinsey, Vice President, Northeast Neighbors, Board Member, Grayswoods Neighborhood Association. I think there's just one point I want to make, that we haven't had any discussion about building a viaduct. And for over a decade, we've talked about this in neighbor associations' meetings, that we need a viaduct over Dean Avenue. I mean, it's the ideal place for it, and here we have this huge discussion, ongoing, but nobody says one word about that viaduct. It should include some kind of a plan, get the engineering done. Once the engineering's done, we can start looking for the money. But, you know, I think this is all for naught unless we start thinking viaducts, and a viaduct over Dean Avenue is absolutely essential. That's all I have.
Sharon Cooper, New York Neighborhood Association. I'm in agreement with Marlon, we need an overpass. So far, we've got an active petition going on, 795 signatures so far, and we want to get more if we can, which I know we will. We stand by the tracks long enough, because the trains hold up the people for about an hour and 45 minutes.
That's clever.
I'm sorry?
That's clever.
We talked to the Capital East, and they said they would stand on the other side and get signatures as well. So when it gets warm weather, we're going to do that. What really concerns me as well is the trains are going to be increasing, which they said that, and we have people that are elderly, and if they need an emergency vehicle, it takes time to get to them, and time is of the essence. If the family has fire, time is of the essence as well. So there's safety issues with this. And also, being from the East Side, if there's a train on the track, but there's not one on, say it's over Dean, but it's not on Walnut, they're going to race that train to get across the tracks. They're not only wasting gas, but they're taking a chance on being hit by the trains. And as for the flashing lights on Hubble, saying there's a train, everybody on the East Side knows that, that's why they're on University. So I think it'd really be a good idea for the safety to get an overpass in the area. Put it on any one of the streets, Grand, Walnut, Dean, Hubble, any of them, just so we have something to get us out of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Sharon, would you mind submitting your petition and handing it to Mr. Coleman?
Sure.
I move to receive and file.
Good work.
Thank you.
Mayor, we should vote on his motion.
Yep. Let me see, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you.
Suzette Jensen, President of Northeast Neighbors, 3127 Thompson Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. I come here tonight to speak in support of those organizations. Our organization voted to support them, that are very concerned and do not want their streets closed. They have very real concerns. They have very real concerns that affect their property value, that affect their safety, the ability of police, fire, and ambulances to get to their homes, and access throughout the East Side community to schools and other amenities. We have very real issues of street flooding that hamper the ability to get about when we have heavy rains. The issues of the speed bumps on Guthrie that also impact traffic. I think that as we look at this, there should be, we are long overdue for a serious traffic study on the East Side of town with traffic flow, because we're also moving a lot of traffic to Euclid, and we have, anyone who's driven the Hubble Avenue corridor knows there's an explosion of multifamily housing in the Hubble Avenue corridor in the city of Des Moines, part of it in the Southeast Polk School District, part of it in the Des Moines School District, that also is going to have a major impact. So these concerns are very real, need to be considered by this council before you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzette.
Good afternoon. Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. Trying to come up with some topics that haven't already been talked about, Mr. Mayor, to keep your suggestions alive. I am intrigued by the fact of the businesses and how much money they've invested in these areas, and the millions and millions of dollars that they've invested. The only question that I have is there's been no discussion about how much they've profited from those investments, and whether or not, we don't talk about that, they only talk about the money they spend, but how much they're profiting, not only at the effect of their investments, but also the effect of the partnerships and the other businesses and the community in which they stay into. I think it's important that we stop giving lip service, or listening to the lip service of many of the people up here that said they're concerned about the community and about the neighborhood. They're concerned about profit. That's all I've heard. Profit is not the only criteria by which a city functions. A function of a city is to be able to develop a balance between business and neighborhoods and community, and have the kind of ideal living conditions that everybody wants to have, and that involves a partnership, and there's been no partnership suggested here. The negotiations that took place, I have to agree, were an embarrassment. The first one that came out wasn't that good. The second one that came out was worse, because it talked about the fact that the citizens would be given up access, and the fact of how much more gas they would spend, and what they would get with simply a few trees and a little bit of a turnaround or a center island. I believe that probably the best thing that was said was by the public relations individual from Union Pacific. She said that this solves our problem right now for what we need. In 10 years, we got to look at this all over again. She's admitting to the fact that this is not a well-done plan. This is a plan for 10 years, and they're going to be back in 10 years after the growth happens, after the expansion may be there, and we're going to be back at this kind of thing, talking about quality of life and the people of the North and East Sides, and what they're going to give up again for the railroad. This has been foreplanning from the beginning. We've not looked at the potentials. We've not looked at the ability of saying, "What can we do in the future?" There's no way that people on Northeast Side are going to accept this. You're going to have probably twice as many people here in a couple more weeks if you pass this, and they'll continue to give you more and more reasons why they don't want it done. They're the citizens. They've invested their tax money, their lives, their blood, their sweat into this, just as many businesses have, who've invested their millions and millions of dollars into the process. Say no, go back to the planning board, and we'll work with them. By the way, you realize that no citizen or neighborhood people were involved in the beginning negotiations of this. This came to us as an ultimatum, not as a bargaining agent.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Mike Swayze. I'm the Business Recruitment Director at the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and also a Des Moines resident at 4412 Southwest 33rd in Des Moines. I want to make a couple of points, clarify a couple of points. One point was made that the UP would bring their jobs here and then go away, and the fact of the matter is, they employ almost 200 full-time employees with a payroll of over $12 million annually, so they are a stable employer in the market. And they're also Iowa's largest rail provider, and we are just a small part of an overall national system. And what happens if we don't continue to let them make improvements in their rail system in Iowa, we become capacity-constrained for industrial use, and that means a couple of things. One thing it means, and we talked about this in the work session, one thing it means is that we become a big red spot on their national map, and so they don't market, they won't market central Iowa to rail users. Currently, they're an excellent partner with us, an excellent marketing partner, economic development partner. We team up with them on a lot of projects, not only in central Iowa but across the state. They've been great to work with. But secondly, and maybe more importantly, as we go forward, if we're capacity-constrained, then all of the resources at the UP must go to industrial traffic. And so any discussion that we may have with trying to get the passenger rail from Chicago to Omaha through Des Moines probably becomes a non-starter, because it's a critical piece that would be dedicated just to industrial traffic. I mean, that's a big point for us as well at the partnership as we try to move forward in that direction. And I mentioned that they're a great partner marketing with us, and not only do they market with us across the country, but they go to existing companies here in Iowa that we've talked about. And we've tried to do an estimate on the amount of employees affected by rail-served, that work for companies affected by a rail-served process, and it's well over 2,000 employees just in the metro area here, in the Des Moines metro region. And that payroll is well over $200 million. And we've estimated that the assessment of those properties is well over $30 million. So it's a very substantial decision that's being made whether to help the company move forward in their economic development plans for Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and close the discussion. As I said, this is not a hearing that will be in June, and so the vote here tonight is, where do we go? How do we proceed in terms of keeping our lines open, negotiate for our citizens, the future of our business and employment in Des Moines, and whether or not the rail can accommodate all those folks? So at any rate, any discussion? Anybody? Skip?
This all began with a letter from basically the City Council, but it was from Mayor County that went to Brenda Mainwaring. "The City of Des Moines would like to address the issue of at-grade crossings blocked by stopped or moving, slow-moving Union Pacific trains." Then it goes on, "The negative quality of life caused by blocked crossings may provide for an impediment for the movement of emergency vehicles, inhibit the flow of traffic and commerce, and provide a cause for motorists and pedestrians to violate traffic safety What we received in response from the UP was, well, we'd like to block a few more crossings. And we have a code in the state of Iowa that says that crossings aren't to be blocked for more than 10 minutes. And I think that they just decide to ignore that law. And I would like to say, Rick, I applaud the police department working with the UP recently to check safety crossings and people disobeying the lights. I think we should also check those crossings and see how long they're blocking them for more than 10 minutes. Planning and zoning. A citizen advisory board has recommended denial. Our neighborhoods have recommended denial. I didn't hear one citizen with the neighborhoods on the east side or the near north side get up there and say, go ahead and block them. I think it's important that we keep this in mind. This is not a pilot project. These will be permanent closures of crossings that these citizens own. I haven't heard anything from business but what's good about, good for business. Even though they say that they've been considering the safety issues at these crossings for years, I don't recall them ever stepping up to say, we've got an issue there until we asked, could you quit blocking them for so long? I will commend them, they keep talking about safety, and we should talk about safety. I don't hear them saying anything about helping to put in viaducts. And I would like to talk about a Hull Avenue viaduct will not be $15 or $20 million. It would be a two-lane viaduct, so it would be significantly cheaper on Hull Avenue and probably on 34th. I'd also like to point out that they talked how important this is to business. And we heard tonight, and I've heard before and I've seen the copy of the papers that UP filed to eliminate the rail line to John Deere, who is probably the largest manufacturer in central Iowa, decided to use trucks instead of trains. Really makes you wonder when business stands up there saying how important this is and you can't draw anybody, a new business to this area, when the largest manufacturer in the area says no to trains now. I am disappointed in that. I do think the future is in rail. But I agree with Cherie Mortis. I think that we need to go back to the drawing board, and I think we could come up with a win-win on this.
Bob?
Well, I've tried to attend all the meetings. I have listened to the same people over and over, say the same things. I agree with Skip. I think Cherie, we had a meeting with Cherie, and I think she's got some good ideas. I think we need to look at the bigger picture. I think there's opportunity that we could address and improve the streetscape on a number of those streets over there on the east side. So I guess the other aspect of this is safety issues. As far as I'm concerned, the safest way to address the trains is to close all intersections so you don't have to cross any railroad tracks. Either you cross over with a viaduct or some way, but as somebody mentioned, you know, last week where we had the two deaths, one around Arm and another train is on the other side. And I just think that the closing of these is the safest way we can address those issues. I think also that as we look further down the road as the federal government financing road repairs, they've cut back on their funds through MPO and that. We're not going to get the funds that we had, or the funds that we need to address the roads. The concrete is breaking up and that, and it's really a concern of those who are serving on the MPO and our state people. And that where a train can carry as much as 6,000 trailers that are on the road. So you can see, by taking those off, it's not going to damage our roads as much, and we'll have better roads for everybody to drive on. And as far as the train, that's the most economical way to transport freight. They can carry a lot more and less cost. And that also then is a benefit to the business people because when they have to pay for freight, bringing their goods in and that, that adds to what the end result is to us who are buying the consumer goods, that adds to their cost. I've had two major businesses contact me and say that they, one of them has 1,500 cars a year, and they bring in all their products to its tire company, bring in all their manufacturing ingredients except one, buy train. And they're very concerned of what's going to happen if we don't help improve the capacity for the Union Pacific and how it's going to address their needs at their business. And they have over 2,000 employees at that location. So I'm in favor of us continuing to look at this, see if we can improve the overall area and address the needs for the, what Cherie has spoken, that her son is an engineer, and she brought in some ideas. And I think all those should be considered as we go forward.
Kelly?
Chris? Maybe before I make any comment, could I ask a question of one of the speakers? Is that all right? Out of protocol? There's been a, could I ask the UP representative?
Brenda.
I just wanted to ask you, because I have an interest, all the information I have a second-hand about the John Deere spur or line and the closure of that. Can I get more specific information about that?
Absolutely. We're required by federal law to provide service to a customer until they notify us that they no longer need service. We continued providing service to John Deere for three years past the time that they stopped shipping by rail. All of you who are familiar with Ankeny know that there is a great deal of development, a lot of, a new school, a lot of new residential area that developed in the vicinity of John Deere. The rail service went through the middle of that. That factored into the decision of John Deere that rail was no longer the kind of service that was going to work best for that facility. It was during an economic downturn. They were making some choices about what kind of service they needed. They notified us that they did not need rail service any longer. We therefore terminated service on that line, worked with the federal government for permission to abandon that line. That line is entirely separate from the service that we provide on the line to Des Moines. It does not provide us any additional capacity to serve Des Moines. It's kind of like an interstate on the west side and the east side of Des Moines. They both are roadways, but they don't serve the same use. They don't serve the same purpose.
Thank you. You know, this issue has been hard, I think, for all of us because, you know, we have to remind ourselves that this started by looking for a solution that we identified, which, and many of the neighbors came forward, you know, two years ago, and suggested we need to stand with them to find a solution to the amount of time that roads were blocked and so forth. Skip cited that action or part of it from two years ago, two and a half years ago, three years ago almost. So I want to say this is not some kind of cowering to one company or one rail yard. It's a solution that the rail company and our staff and representatives came up with as a way to solve a bigger issue on the entire east side, primarily in north side. And I've watched this very carefully. I know other people have been more involved with the details. I have been slow to support this because most of, and I'll grant this to a number of people who made these comments before, most of this has been characterized as a way to help the railroad succeed and prosper. And quite frankly, that was of little concern to me. I want them to do well, but my end game isn't that they do well, it's that their customers do well, the people that are paying property tax, employing people. And I think, like many of you, I've heard from a number of them, and I've been told in quite a bit of detail the degree to which the rail line benefits them and their future plans for growth and expansion of their workforce, which means more jobs. I've been concerned about the traffic patterns on the east side, and I've tried to study them and look at them, driven up and down these roads. And I know that some people will be significantly disadvantaged, especially those that live between the track and east, and I-235 and east, what is it, 25th and 26th, as you move a little further east. Because they will have to travel out of their way to get to one of the other intersections. But I've been convinced that Euclid and Guthrie aren't that far apart. The improvements that can be made to allow people to travel those areas are, I think, significant, and we're not on the drawing board when it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I think, I'm interested in everybody else's comments, but I think long-term, as difficult as this is for some, I've been convinced that this is the best thing for the entire region. I'd like to say one other thing. I think you all know, but maybe not everybody on the watching or here in the hall know that I serve as one of the leaders of the Metropolitan Planning Alliance. Bob and I actually together are on that executive committee. And that does a number of things in terms of coordination of transportation issues in the metro area and in the city. We've been lucky because that's been the source of funding for a number of the really high-priority, high-profile transportation projects in the metro area. What a lot of people may not know is that one of the important works of that is the coordination of what we call the Freight Roundtable. How does the metro area most successfully manage the shipping of goods and into and out of our metro area? Right now, it's chaired by a business that is one of the primary users of this rail line, and I've had the chance to interact with them pretty significantly. And I can tell you that the sense of the professionals is that this is a reasonable solution to a really difficult problem. And that if done well, and I'm convinced we can do it well, we can make the north and east side more predictable and better long-term. With that said, I would not, I wouldn't take some of the other solutions that have been off the table. I think the way that we interact as a community with the rail lines can be improved. And I think while funding is very tight right now, I would really be interested in the will of the council as it comes to long-term planning for a viaduct and other solutions that improve things. I don't, I think this is one solution. I think there are many out there. The mayor and I talked about that a little earlier, is what else is out there that could additionally help this. And I think regardless of what happens tonight, we have to double down on those other solutions and continue to work to address this problem.
I'm looking for the gentleman that talked about the speed bumps on Guthrie. Did he leave? Oh, there you are. You know, if we get anything done out of this, we can get those off of Guthrie. I remember when Chief Judge Moore had those installed, and that was part of the deal when the Guthrie viaduct was extended. And I see heads nodding out there. That's exactly what happened. I think we have many other devices now, calming devices and technology that would help us address that problem. But I know exactly when they were put in, and I do agree with you, because staff will not let us put them anyplace else in the city, so there must be something to it. I appreciate everybody coming here tonight, having the discussion. I thought that the comments and the remarks were all very appropriate. And I'd go back to Phil Delafield and his original comments when he came out and was outlining for us actually the process that we had gone through. And whether or not everybody knew about it, there were a significant number of meetings, there've been a significant number of discussions. We've had a lot of discussions at this council table. I know staff has been working with us on a regular basis. I echo what Councilmember Coleman is saying. We have to look at and have balance. Whenever we look at and strive to have balance, is everybody going to be happy? No. But I think we have to look at what is for the better good of the city as a whole. And I do get, I'd say, riled a little bit when I hear people talking about east and west. I just really am very sensitive to that, and that's not what this community is about. The city has made some good investments in the east side, as well as downtown and on the west side. So the east side has not gone without. To whoever it was that was talking about Eastgate, I would love to get something in Eastgate. And I know that Bob Mahaffey and others on this council have worked like crazy to get development in Eastgate. But for whatever reasons, it's just not meant to happen at this point. But we have to work and make sure that we don't put barriers or obstacles in the way to allow for expansion of business. Because that's what's going to make the city better in the long run. So we're not all on the same page. I'll be the first to admit it. It's a difficult decision. Tonight, we're setting the date of hearing, and the action is to allow staff to continue discussions. I would encourage everybody to come and sit at the table with an attitude of, we're going to get this done. Not everybody's going to be happy, but the majority of us will be supportive and understand that this is for the betterment of the city, and we do have a can-do attitude, and we're going to get it done.
Brian?
I oppose even moving it forward in terms of the direction we're going. If the city wants to move it forward and talk about viaducts, I'm very supportive of that. Outside of that, I don't think there's any real solutions, which is why I have not engaged in any conversations moving forward. The only conversation I will engage in is the conversation that Skip and I started four years ago to talk about viaducts. That's it. So I oppose moving it forward.
All right. Just clarification, I'd like to ask the city attorney, Skip has been studying state law over here. And Mr. Attorney, one of the things that bothers us at the local level and probably at the state level, whose law is it that governs crossings and rail service?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Moore is correct that there is a statute on the books that purports to grant cities authority to pass an ordinance that would ask for or demand of rail certain time parameters regarding closing of crossings. That statute, however, has been held to be preempted. There's case law that has held that that's preempted by federal law under the U.S. Supremacy Clause of the Federal Constitution. So it would be the federal law that would control rather than the state statute.
Which brings up another issue for all of us as we talk about the discussion. As citizens and businesses, some things are a little bit out of our control. And we could pass an ordinance right here today and say, we're not going to block that, we're going to keep it all the way open, and state supports us, and federal law would not permit it, and it sounds like they take precedent here. So as far as I'm concerned, I think that I am going to continue to work hard with the neighbors and with the businesses. And let's talk about solutions, and we've got, I've got a great list of some of the problems that have been presented numerous times by the citizens. But I think they're real problems. I think about connectivity, and I think about the statement about Hull Avenue as one of the few streets that goes from one side of the east side all the way to North High School, and that you can get there. I think about some of the poor planning that's taken place all over town, getting north and south. You know, you take Merle Hay Road, you can drive a long ways on Merle Hay Road, and when you get to University, you stop. You take 86th Street, you can get all the way to Ashworth Road. You take 86th Street, you can get all the way to Ashworth Road. You take 100th Street, you can go pretty far north, but all of a sudden, there's three lots that got put in the middle of the street there, and it stops just south of 3580. I think there's a lot of planning that we ought to do together to try to connect people to places, connect businesses to their products, and move stuff in and out of Iowa. I think that's part of our future. We get great accolades for the way we all work together. And I think that that's, I'm echoing quite a bit of what's been said by our council here, I think that's our job. We're trying to figure out, how do we come up with a win-win situation? Cherie Mortis mentioned it earlier. It isn't, you know, all for the railroads, it's not all for the business, it's not all for the residents. There ought to be something in between that works. And City Manager has talked with a lot of us about what's the possibility of the overpasses, underpasses, all those kinds of solutions. I guess the possibility's always out there, now we've got to just figure out where the money comes from to make that sort of thing happen. And more importantly, if that is a solution to any of those spots, you know, everybody needs to understand what the timeframe is, that that could happen. So I think we've got more discussion, more work to do. I'm going to reserve my, on the final vote on this, but I am in favor of moving this forward to continue our discussion, and knowing that in the next six, seven weeks, we've got a lot of work to do. And together, I think we can come up with something. We're probably all going to come out of the room with black eyes now and then, but it, I think that's what Des Moines is about, I think it's what Central Iowa's about. It's about how we make good solutions, have good jobs, good places to work, good neighborhoods for employers to depend on where their employees and owners live. And let's continue on that path and continue to make Des Moines a great place to have a business and raise a family. So, having said that, who's going to make a motion on this? Item 38 and 38A, which is setting the date of hearing of June 10.
I'll make a motion that we continue to work on this and try to come up with a resolve like the mayor is suggested, and see if we can't make a win-win situation out of this. So I move 38 and 38A.
Five yes, two no.
All right. So that, for everybody that's listening and watching, we're moving it forward to the date of hearing, but knowing that there's at least 20 things here that we've got to work on between now and then, and hopefully, we're going to come up with some sort of a resolve on a number of them. And I think that we have also heard a commitment from Union Pacific that they're willing to stay at the table with us. Number one. Number two, they also have some ideas in terms of switching and other things to expedite movement of some of that train movement over in the Grand and Dean and all those streets to get them in the other yard from the short line. So, thank you all for coming. We appreciate your participation. We appreciate your being caring citizens and business owners in the city of Des Moines, and let's continue to work together. Having said all that, we're starting our hearings just a tad bit late. They were scheduled at 5:00, but at 6:15, let's take about a two-minute recess, and we will convene our hearings with item 43.
Seven yes.
Item 43, on the conveyance of a permanent underground gas easement to Mid-American Energy Company, conveyance of fiber optics license agreement to Century Link, and the acceptance of a permanent underground fiber optics easement for the MetroNet shared communication system, all being relocated in conjunction with the Greater Des Moines Botanical Center redevelopment project, council communication number 13-172. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this?
I have to say that.
All right. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a comment, since I serve on the board there, that this is needed to relocate the wires and that for the, them and benefit of other businesses too, as it goes down along the river there. So, if there's no other comments, I'd move this item.
All right. Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven yes.
Item 45, items regarding 1734 East University and 1213 East 17th Court to allow a custom retail carpentry and mill workshop and office involving outdoor storage of contractor vehicles and job trailers. Subject conditions is a recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve an amendment to the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan, future land use from low, medium-density residential to commercial auto-related, small-scale strip commercial. B, a hearing on rezoning of the property from C1, neighborhood retail commercial to limited C2, general retail highway-oriented commercial. And C is the first consideration of this ordinance. Anybody in the audience to speak? Item 45, 1734 East University and 1213 East 17th Court.
That move is denial, right?
Subject conditions, there's not a denial here, I don't believe. Recommendation was to approve on A.
I think it ought to be 45B. Oh, okay, it's planning, they did change and go to a C2 approval.
What are we voting on here? 45A or B or?
A, B, and C.
Seven yes.
Item 46, items regarding the First Equity Property Holding Acquisitions Fund II LLC. It's the purchaser represented by Ann Alters, officer for the property in the vicinity of 2303 Merle Hay Road for the use as a pharmacy store. A is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the 2020 Community Character Plan, future land use map from low-density residential to commercial auto-oriented small-scale strip development. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property from R160, one-family low-density residential, to C1, neighborhood retail commercial, to PUD, planned unit development subject to conditions. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. It looks as though we have a speaker. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, William Lillis and Chris Posey, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, we're appearing on behalf of the applicant, First Equity Corporation. Tom Lowe from First Equity is here with me this evening. I'd like to introduce the property to, I think some of you know the property, but I'd like to refer to the area first. The property's Merle Hay and Hickman, Hickman being here, Merle Hay being here. And the property is generally a rectangular piece that fronts on Merle Hay, on the east side of Merle Hay, north of Hickman, and west of the existing Ace Hardware Store. It's proposed to be a CVS pharmacy. We've had Planning and Zoning Commission consideration, staff consideration recommendation, and we've had numerous meetings with members of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. We had one open issue that we had a disagreement on, which had to do with the signage, location of the signage on the corner, pretty much right here, as far as the sign that was proposed, which is consistent with the sign that was approved at Second and Euclid, and also consistent with the new sign for the new CVS on Park Avenue at Southeast 14. We proposed, and Planning and Zoning Commission does not agree with us, the sign that this sign is consistent with the one at Second and Euclid and Southeast 14th and Park Avenue. It's 22 feet in height, and it's, the width is, I don't have a drawing, it's about 14 foot from side to side. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission, and their recommendation was to have a 10 to 12-foot high sign, and we were 22, we proposed and sent to staff a reduction in size to a 18-foot high sign versus a 22. In the last few days, we've talked with representatives of the Merle Hay group, and we've also talked with Councilman Grease, and we're proposing, although this doesn't show it, a dimension of 15 to 16 feet. The 10 to 12 foot was, I think, an effort on part of Planning and Zoning Commission, as I recommend, or as I recollect their conversation, was to get something shorter. I don't think that the script and the size was really, I think, the major, major issue. So, since it is a PUD, and it would require us to make an amendment to our request, we would do that prior, Mr. Mayor, to the consideration by the City Council. Other than that, the site plan, I have the site plan to show how this would lay out on the site. This is Hickman, this is Merle Hay, and then this would be where the sign is at this location. There is another sign here, because Mr. Margulies owns and leases to Ace Hardware, the store to the east. That will remain, and then this back piece here is part of a trade that we, meaning CVS, are doing with the Margulies property here, to take down the sign of Ace Hardware, and then have that sign be, that is difficult to see, but it would be, this sign is about six foot tall, and it's located here, because there's the driveway that comes across and then ties back to the Ace Hardware store, which will remain. We've worked with the staff. I don't We've worked with the staff, I don't think there are any other open issues, but we have had this discussion, Mr. Mayor, with the representatives of the neighborhood. We've had several meetings, and we've enjoyed working with them, and I think, but for the sign, we were generally in agreement with everything else. We welcome questions the council might have regard to what we're proposing.
Any questions, anybody has, or Mr. Lillis? Hallie?
I, I don't have any questions at this point. As, as Bill mentioned, we did have some discussions today about the height of the sign, and I'll let the residents speak to that if they'd like to, but I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. Bill, thank you.
I've got a question.
All right. We got a question over here?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Are you familiar, I'm just, just out of curiosity, are you familiar with the CVS in Ankeny?
I am.
From what I understand, they've got a rather short monument sign there.
We don't like it. And that's, that's our new store, and that's, without exception, that's the smallest sign that CVS has had. And so we've had the discussion, as you remember, skip at Second and Euclid, and that was, you know, frankly, that was an agreed-upon height and so forth, and then Southeast Fourteenth and Bryan's Ward and Park Avenue, we, CVS, have bought that, and the old Osko store will come down, and so we have the, frankly, the twenty-two-foot sign. Thus, we proposed it at this location, and we've had a pushback as far as the size, so we're willing to reduce that, but, yes, yes, I'm very familiar with the one in Ankeny, and we don't like it. Best way to say it, and that's true, Tom?
My man.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I, I know CVS cooperated, and we wanted a monument sign up at Second and Euclid, the neighbors did too, and they came back with a design that the neighborhood was happy to accept.
Right. My name is Tom Lowe with First Equity Group. Just in response to the Ankeny question, the corner that we acquired in Ankeny was originally part, is part of a, of a center, it was two buildings at the corner, and then it was continued with the existing center to the north. There was a larger sign at the corner, and we had tried to replicate the shopping center sign that exists a little bit further north, and it still exists today, and that's about a thirty-foot sign. So although we were trying to get a height similar to that, at the very least, try to get a panel on that sign, we were unable to do so, so the twelve-foot that's at the corner, actually, it's not twelve-foot, the sign that's at the corner is what we were restricted to. But there is a shopping center sign that is much larger that we, we tried to get a panel on further north. I think that sign's at, you know, twenty-five feet or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's ask if there's anybody else in the audience that has any comments that they'd like to make to add to the hearing?
Mayor, County Board, Council members, and Manager Clark, Jason Pulliam, twenty-one thirteen, Fifty-second Street, also with the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association Board of Directors. I'd like to thank Mr. Lillis and Mr. Posey, and the representatives from CVS, I think they've been very receptive to resident input throughout this process, and we appreciate that. I think we're all painfully aware of the, the state that the northeast corner of Hickman and Merle Hay has been in for quite some time, so it would certainly be good to see some redevelopment there. As you've already discussed, there, there was some, some heartburn among residents about the size of the sign. I think, to sum up, I think certainly CVS would prefer a taller sign, and I know P&amp;Z and some of the residents would prefer the ten-to-twelve foot sign, but I think the fifteen-to-sixteen foot sign that's, that's been agreed, agreed upon is, is fair. It's not what every one would want, but it's fair, I think it's reasonable. And generally speaking, I think our board has been supportive of what CVS plans to do at that intersection, so could be a, a real positive thing for the neighborhood. We'll just reflect forward here a little bit and say that, that long-term, I think you're going to hear residents from the Merle Hay neighborhood, and perhaps others, coming to you and sending the message that we would like to have broader discussion about the impact that large commercial signage and billboards have on our corridors. I think we can and should, should do better with our signage and, and some of the visual clutter that we have along our commercial corridors. I know that's maybe another discussion for another day, but at least want to put that on your radar here. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to field them.
Anybody have anything, or Jason?
Nice to see you standing up there, Jason.
It's a little awkward. My comfort zone is back there.
We're gonna, we're gonna write about you.
What's that?
We're gonna write about you.
Yeah, I don't have anything on this issue, but maybe we can talk about Taco Trucks sometime.
All right.
Thank you, Jason.
Anybody else?
If nobody else is going to speak, I just wanted to congratulate the association and Hallie for working through that issue, because I really want to support this. It is a horrible, horrible intersection right now, may, maybe one of the, maybe, maybe the one that I'm aware of that has the most potential and is least used right now, and so I'm very glad for the development, and I know many of my neighbors are very excited about this, so, well done.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I agree. I think probably my greatest accomplishment on the council was getting rid of that red and yellow painting across the street, and I didn't even have anything to do with that. I'm glad there's a-
Don't tell anybody that.
There's another tenant there. No, but I, I'm really happy.
Take complete credit for it.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I'm excited about this project, and quite honestly, I'm, I'm, of all the issues that could have come up, you know, we're, we're putting a brand-new commercial complex here, there's all sorts of different issues that could have come up, and so I, quite honestly, I was thankful that the sign was the, the greatest hurdle we had to overcome. I'm thankful that it's not a pole sign, that it's a monument sign, and I, I'm thankful, Bill, to you and your team, for, for compromising down from twenty-two foot down to fifteen foot, sixteen foot. So, I'm, I'm glad we found compromise. I think this will be a great, a great opportunity for that corner, and it'll really be a foundation for, for developing that area moving forward. So, I will move this item if there's no further comments.
All right, yeah, it has been moved. I just might add that, you know, as we move forward, I think that the whole sign issue is one that we need to talk about, and maybe at the direction this council, send back to P&amp;Z to give us some updated recommendations. I know that Bob and I worked on that for a number of years, and it's interesting that through this process, why we apparently negotiate each sign, and, and it leaves some inconsistencies around the city, as you start looking at signage, we see billboards, and then we see twelve-footers, fifteen-footers, twenty-two-footers, I mean, what's the standard? I mean, do we want a standard? Do we want to negotiate every one of them? I, I'm concerned about having that be the, the way deals are worked out. I do appreciate the, the way everybody worked together to, to make this one happen, but I'd certainly like to see us have some standard that a developer coming into Des Moines can count on.
You can recall back when we were on planning zoning, get rid of the, those signs along Fluor Drive and that, as they used to come in, and thankfully, that some of those are gone now.
Yep. So I'm going to vote for it, but I do hope that we can send something as a clue. Did you want to make, would you be interested in making that part of a recommendation, sending a message to P&amp;Z that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to add that. I believe the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association was looking at coming back in the, the next couple of months to have the discussion, so we can, I, I don't know, at this point, we may want to hold off and see what their board in terms of feedback that they would have for planning and zoning. I would be okay moving it tonight if you'd like to add that.
I think we've got fifty-five or six other neighborhoods that probably have a concern from time to time, too.
Well, we've got a sign over on Thirty-first Street between Grant and Ingersoll that is really out there.
So, any rate, if we could make that to send it back for the larger look, and, and maybe we could have a discussion with them.
Yep. And just for clarification, my motion was to change the P&amp;Z recommendation on the signage from twelve-foot to sixteen-foot, with, with the expectation that we're shooting for fifteen-foot, but we understand that we didn't have a chance to do engineer drawings and so forth this afternoon.
Seven, yes?
Okay, item forty-seven, items regarding the property in the vicinity of twenty East Eighteenth Street, Anthony Holt, to allow the use of a portion of the property for outside storage of inoperable construction equipment. A is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the 2020 Community Character Plan, future land use map from low-density residential to general industrial. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property from M1, light industrial, to limited M2, heavy industrial, subject to the conditions, and C is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Anybody in the audience to speak to forty-seven, A, B, and/or C? Yes, sir.
Hello, Anthony Holt, twenty East Eighteenth Street, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. If I could have the camera just a moment. The property that we're looking at is here, we are in the middle of industrial district, not far from other M2. We've been here since nineteen ninety-seven, we're not planning on doing something different, we're trying to come into compliance as far as zoning is considered. We've been doing the same repairs since nineteen ninety-seven.
Anybody have any questions for Anthony?
Anthony, I thought we, did you go to the Board of Adjustment?
We went all the way through on a lot next to Keeman, on the other side. Not this particular property.
Okay, so this is different.
The one on Keeman, they limited us to six months only of any particular item, and they limited us the space we could use down there.
Okay. I'll-
So, is this the second parcel, then, you want to use for the same purpose?
This is our original parcel. After we were limited, the other one suggestion was to come back here.
Okay.
On the second-
This is our actual piece that we've worked with, I mean, we've been at this present since nineteen ninety-seven.
Oh, you've been already there.
Okay, I'm tracking now.
So, yes, we are, we've been before you once before, and-
I thought you had.
I'll move forty-seven, A, B, and C.
All right. Forty-seven, A, B, and C has been moved. Does anybody have any comments from the audience?
Thanks, Anthony.
Any comments from the council? Seeing none. Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes?
It's your motion, I'm always slow on those.
Item forty-eight, on the assessment of a five-hundred-dollar penalties to the following liquor license holders for sales to minors. A, University Groceries, twenty-one twenty-one University Avenue. B, the last-stop beverage shop, twenty-eight thirty-nine East University Avenue. C, the Get 'N Go, number twenty-eight thirty-two seventy-four East University Avenue. And D is the Come 'N Go, twenty-seven thirty-one number, and it's located at thirty-one oh four University Avenue.
I'll move forty-eight, A, B, C, and D.
Any comments? Anybody in the audience?
Seven, yes?
Item forty-nine, on the assessment of a fifteen-hundred-dollar penalty and a thirty-day suspension to the University Groceries at twenty-one twenty-one University Avenue for a sale to a minor. Anyone here to speak to this item?
I'll move.
Score one, over here. Hallie? Seven, yes?
Item fifty, on an assessment of a fifteen-hundred-dollar penalty and a sixty-day suspension to Come 'N Go, number twenty-seven twenty-two, at twenty-two eleven University Avenue, Avenue for sale to minor.
And on this one, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know we went back and we're looking at some of the zoning changes we made in terms of good operators versus bad operators, and I think we need to, you know, look at issues like this and say, well, we, we still are going to have the problem regardless of who the operator is.
Agreed.
Well, and, you know, the, the issue, I think, sort of to discuss it a little further, is how do we judge a, you know, good operator from a bad operator, and how do you, what, what rules or training has taken place, and how does this happen? And obviously, it happens at some places more than once. So, you know, what kind of standards can, can be put in place, and you might want to, at some point or another, have further discussion with our legal advisor here.
I'm sure he would recommend perfectly objective standards.
Absolutely.
Seven, yes?
Item fifty-one, on the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of Norden Hall at seven oh nine East Locust Street, we're going to, the motion here is to continue this to April twenty-second. I know that there's a lot of details that are being worked out as we speak, so I believe that's the reason for the continuance.
I'll move to continue to April twenty-second.
Been moved. Any discussion? Anybody in the audience?
Seven, yes?
Item fifty-two, on the Botanical Center accessible elevator, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as the White's Company LLC, Mike Chusley, President, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, Council Communication number thirteen dash one seventy-one, A is the approval of the contract and the bond, and the permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this item? Accessible elevator at the Botanical Center.
I'll make a comment on that. The, this is part of the agreement when the city leased this to the Botanical Gardens, and this is to fulfill that obligation, and I would, if no other comments, I'll move this item.
Been moved. Any other comment?
Seven, yes?
Item fifty-three, on the Southeast Connector paving, Southeast Ninth Street to Southeast Fifteenth Street, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designating the lowest responsible bidder as Elder Corporation, Jared R. Elder II, President, seven million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, Council Communication number thirteen dash one eighty-five, A is approval of the contract and the bond and permission to sublet, and B is approving the professional services agreement with Kirkham Michael and Associates, Inc., for the Southeast Connector, Southeast Ninth Street to Southeast Fifteenth Street, not to exceed a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The Council Communication number on this is thirteen dash one sixty-nine. This is a project, as everybody knows, that we've been working on and continue to. We will continue to seek any and all assistance possible, federal, state, and otherwise, to get this completed all the way out to sixty-five sixty-nine bypass, and congratulations to everybody for getting this thing moved along. Any comment, anybody?
I'll recognize the hefty investment on the east, into the east side, and I will move fifty-three, A and B.
I'm glad you noted that.
I just want to make sure everybody knows. I recognize it.
Seven, yes?
Come on, Bob.
Item fifty-four, on the Municipal Service Center Phase One, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designating the lowest responsible bidder as Newman Brothers, Inc., Marshall G. Lynn III, President, fifteen million, five thousand, nine hundred dollars, Council Communication number thirteen dash one eighty-two, A is approval of the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. We've had significant discussions on this, and I will add that we are making all possible efforts to protect this area up to the five-hundred-year flood level, not only our piece, but certainly a very valuable development ground in this area for which we already have some really good neighbors.
I'll move fifty-four.
Want to say anything, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, the mayor and I had a conver-
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, the mayor and I had a conversation earlier today about the flood protection levels on this particular property after our workshop this morning. And I did then consult with Jeb Brewer, our city engineer. And I'll try to summarize this, Jeb. If I say it wrong, you please correct me. But the question from the mayor, if I might, was what will be the level of protection at this site with regard to the 500-year floodplain standard after the city has made the improvements that the council has placed in our capital improvement program to address additional flood protection on, on the river? You might recall the number 20 million hours. That's what we've allocated. That funding would be used to elevate bridge levels and make improvements to the channel and, and other things, including levee improvements. And the answer is that after those improvements are in place and using the new flood flow frequency data that the Corps of Engineers has established for us, this particular site would be, or the levee, would be at the 500-year floodplain level less the three feet additional amount on top of it. I'm not thinking of the term, Jeb. There's a free board. There we go. It came to me. There's an additional three for it on top of the levee. That this, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't meet that requirement, but the, the top of the levee would be at the 500-year floodplain level, so it would protect to that, to that level. The free, the free board is sort of like a fudge factor, if I understand it correctly. You, you design it based on, on what the data shows you, and then you add a little bit just to make sure you covered it. That's a standard, a standard provision in many of these levee projects. In this case, to be clear, the levee, after we've made our improvements on the Des Moines River, would be at the 500-year floodplain level.
And Jeb, as, as we, I see you nod your head up and down, so I'm feeling really good about that.
So am I, actually.
Yeah. Let me, uh, just also add to that. We're hopeful, are we not, that we can convince the Corps of Engineers because this whole system is kind of tied together that, or we need to reach out to, so that we can get assurances from them that they will maintain their, their levee at a similar standard. Is that correct?
Correct. Mayor, members of council, Jeb Brewer. Yes, the, uh, the portion of levee further downstream from here, southeast Des Moines, that's a Corps of Engineers-owned and operated levee. So, yeah, we, in fact, we were over at Rock Island. We took a group over just a couple of weeks ago. We're in constant discussions with them about our plans and making sure that they try to schedule those and get those into there so they can make improvements. You know, but we're moving ahead with what we can do with ours based upon council's action to set that. We've got the consultant we've been going through, and of course, when you work with the Corps, it's, you know, there's lots of things to do, but we're, you know, we're heavily engaged with them trying to make this happen.
Jeb, just for clarification, the frequency flow study that we have seen, that was a preliminary study, and we're waiting for a wider, broader, more inclusive study that looks at the whole watershed?
It was a study done by the Corps of Engineers. The actual floodplain regulations is through FEMA. It's another organization, so, you know, they, they have different functions. In fact, some of the most recent legislation, they, the federal government's asked them to try to get their processes a little more in line because it's kind of confusing when one, one agency says something else. But it's, FEMA hasn't completed their remapping of the area, but the Corps has done that study, so. But I think what we want to do is have the Corps also look at not only their operations from Sailerville and Red Rock. I think there's a lot of opportunities there for operations and how they work the reservoir system. And so we've had, asked them to see, you know, try to get that into their budget so they could start that study and, on those operational studies for the whole basin.
So you're saying that this is the final study of this watershed? And this is what we've discovered?
Well, the Corps of Engineers, that's their most recent analysis for the discharges.
This is a final, not a preliminary?
Well, from the Corps, it was a study. It's just a study on theirs, but it's not a, it's adopted. FEMA's the one that would adopt it. FEMA has adopted it.
I understand. I get it, words. Anybody have any other questions?
I don't have any questions of Jeb. I just got a comment. I'd like to point out that I'm very pleased that Newman Brothers are receiving this contract. Good local firm, quality work, been here a long time. They'll be around to be accountable if there's problems, which I doubt there will be. And also elders on the, uh, the item before, even though they're from Pleasant Hill, they do employ people from this area and buy their materials here. So thank you for sticking with us on this and getting the bid.
All right. And we have a motion, I believe.
I might remind Mr. Meyer this is another major investment in the southeast side of Des Moines.
Absolutely. It's not a library, but, you know.
We can put one on there.
He said it in our workshop, but it should be repeated here. Phase two is really critical, and to move public works as soon as we possibly can.
I agree, and I hope that the, in addition to this vote, that the city manager looks at moving, uh, public works out of the East Village so we can develop the East Village in a timely fashion. The Lower East Village, also known as the market district.
But if you look at those two items right there that we've just voted on, that's $25 million plus.
What are you getting?
Major investment.
Okay, so moving right along. Debt completes the hearings?
Already?
Does it not?
Yes, sorry.
All right, so let's show that they end at, uh, 6:55. Let's go back now to the ordinance's first consideration. Thirty-nine is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding parking revisions on East First Street and additional municipal employee parking spaces at the east end of Court Avenue Bridge due to the principal Riverwalk construction. Council Communication number thirteen dash one seventy-three. Anybody here to speak to that?
I'll move thirty-nine.
Been moved. Any discussion?
Seven, yes.
Item forty, amending Chapter 102 of the municipal code regarding Skywalk lighting to reflect current lighting standards. Council Communication number thirteen dash one sixty-eight. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance. The waiver is requested by the city traffic engineer and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak to that?
I'll move item forty, A and B.
All right.
Seven, yes.
Which one was that one? Item forty-one, or forty-I, from Councilmember Moore to discuss off-road vehicles on Four Mile Drive. Councilmember Moore?
This is an issue that's been ongoing ever since the Interceptor Sewer Line was placed through that area going to Ankeny for some odd reason after they got done in there. The four-wheelers think this is the spot to go four-wheeling, and it's not just east siders or any side of town. They've even caught somebody from Milwaukee buried down there. Recently, if you read the article in the paper, the neighbors have become so frustrated that a gentleman went down there with a gun, even though it turned out to be a BB gun. He did take a shot inside the car. And some of the residents are so frustrated with it, they've started hauling logs down there. Not me, Rick, not with my approval, but they actually have, and they're placing logs down there now to keep people out of the area. And I just thought it was time that we need to have discussion about what we're going to do about that. We can't continue to allow this to happen. And I'm really afraid that it's going to increase in intensity, and we're going to have a tragedy down there. And if it's not somebody being shot, it might be somebody losing control of a vehicle or something. I think we may have a speaker or two in the audience that'd like to speak to this.
I'm going to move to receive and file.
It hasn't been officially presented yet, but you're right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for taking me today. My name is Karen Shupin. I live at 3804 Indianapolis Avenue. I'm Chair of Grayse Woods Neighborhood Association. I'm here this evening to talk about mudding. It's a word that I have never been familiar with until two years ago, and it's become a real problem in Grayse Woods. After the Interceptor Sewer, which Skip was talking about, was completed along Four Mile Creek approximately two years ago, the area was landscaped. It looked beautiful. But then people started driving their pickup trucks through there and leaving extremely deep ruts. And it was, the area was destroyed. In addition, personal property has also been damaged. According to an article in the Des Moines Register on Tuesday, March 26, 2013, a man threatened four people with a gun after he saw them driving through the mud nearest home. The article also said the Des Moines Police, the, uh, the article also said that according to the Des Moines Police, the man fired a shot through one of the vehicle's windows. The Des Moines Police Department has done an excellent job in arresting numerous violators. The gun threat, though, two weeks ago, has actually just been the breaking point in this whole issue. We are tired of hearing about the issue, and we are tired of looking at the mess that's down there. It's time to move forward with this and get signage and barriers in this area. Closing Four Mile Drive will not fix this problem. The issue would not be tolerated in any other area of Des Moines. Please, let's address this before a life is needlessly lost. Thank you.
Any questions of Karen? Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Well, unless we've got a resolve at this time, I would like to move to refer this back to the city manager and staff to come up with a resolve and report back in two
Seven, yes.
Item forty, Roman numeral two, from Councilmember Moore to discuss snow plowing rules and regulations for private snow plowing companies. Mr. Moore?
I placed this on the agenda after a hearing from a gentleman at the Waterbury Neighborhood Association, but after speaking with Pat Kozitsa and with Councilperson Hensley, I think I'm satisfied with the situation there, and I don't think we need any further discussion on it.
Karen?
Move to receive and file the information.
For the council members.
Comment, I should say.
Seven, yes.
All right. That takes us to communications and reports. This one from John W. Doc, Sr., 1727 Thirteenth Street to speak regarding the Jump Start Program. Is John in the audience? There he is.
My name is John Doc. I live at 1727 Thirteenth Street. And before I ask my question or make my statement, I want it to be known that I've had the Jump Start Program and the Rutherfordization Program come to my home with contracts up to $60,000, and my home is still falling around, around me. I have my toilet, when you flush it, shit runs in the basement. I can't sit on the toilet because I have nails coming up through the floor. I still have mold in my house. And my question to the mayor and the city council is, what's going to be done about, if anything? They failed to honor the contract because the contract states that if I do approve the work, they are not supposed to be paid. They got paid anyway, and my house still falling down. For $60,000, you could have bought a house. For $60,000, I could have built a house.
Mr. Manager, do you want to have any staff quickly address it? I'm not familiar with the program enough myself that...
Can we, uh, maybe it's best to refer it, refer him to city staff and then maybe get a report back?
That's fine.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the program.
Well, it's my understanding city staff has been out there and reviewed and done inspections.
Mrs. Hensley, council members, yes, we have reviewed the situation. We do have information. Our staff is involved, Mr. Doc, in your situation. If the council refers it back to me, we will talk with you again. What you just said here is news to me. And so I guess what I would like to do is have the staff look at those specific issues that you raised, and we'll do that, report back to you and to the council. Thank you.
Thanks. That's my motion.
Your motion?
That's the motion, refer it back to city manager.
Seven, yes.
Item forty-two is from Lloyd Ogul, 301 East Walnut Street, Suite Two, regarding conditional use permits and the impact on limited food sales establishments.
Mayor, city council, again, Lloyd Ogul, 301 East Walnut, Suite Two. I'm here on behalf of Ammon LLC. It's a, uh, a family-run business. Girlling Carr and her husband, Sean Singh, and their son operate this business. They signed a lease with the loan, with the property owner back in 2011. This is a subject property that prior to their ownership had been admittedly what you would call a bad actor, and the city had had a lot of problems. They came in, cleaned up the property. The way they run their business, all the liquor and cigarettes are behind the counter. Most of the floor space is devoted to food and grocery items. They first appeared in front of the zoning board back in fall 2011. At that time, there was confusion because of her last name is Carr. She's of Indian descent, and the last name of Carr and also Singh are extremely common within that ethnic group, much more so than, say, the name Smith. But there was a lot of concern from the staff that these, in fact, were related to the prior owners, and, uh, there was a lot of concern, skepticism, that they were different, different parties. And zoning board denied their, their request for conditional use permit to sell revenue from alcohol and tobacco of over 40%. However, they did say, come back, show good citizenship. Come back in a year, show that you're, say, who you are, and you could get your conditional use permit at that time. As you all know, since that time, the city council reduced the setback requirements. I'm not here to question the policy decision of the city to reduce the density of these type of businesses, or certainly to get rid of bad actors. So over a year went by, they did go back, they talked with me, and I think they showed good citizen. They cleaned, they cleaned up the business. They passed numerous, underage testers came in, tried to purchase alcohol or tobacco. They passed those. They donated $2,000 to local school. And they went back and appeared before the, the board. In fact, they had eight people that showed up in support of their business, including the local restaurant next door. And they're not appear to be at much opposition. The board seemed somewhat sympathetic to, to our client's request, but staff was very diligent in reminding the board about the requirements for a conditional use permit where you don't meet that 500-feet setback requirement, and that you show that the, essentially the, it's the economic hardship standard is a really hard standard to meet. You know, you have to show that really there's no other economic beneficial use to this property in order to meet that standard. And they were denied their permit. And really what I'm here today is just, just briefly discuss the, the impact that this ordinance is having, and just a few comments. You know, I am concerned because the way we're going about it now is we're, we're tying these conditional use permits or, or, or address these types of businesses. We're, we're tying it to the real estate, and there's really not an ability to look at whether there's a good actor or a bad actor. Under the standard you have set and, and has applied, no business is ever going to be able to get a conditional use permit that requires a variance from the setback because no one could really realistically meet that economic standard. At least that is my, my opinion. I think, and it's probably clear without mentioning specific actions of that board, there are probably other businesses that have gotten conditional use permits. there are probably other businesses that have gotten conditional use permits where they've said they've met that economic hardship, and I would suggest that perhaps we're not applying that standard evenly. These clients are probably the first ones of many that are going to be coming up before the board over the next year after the expiration of, I think, December 31, 2013. And I'd also point out that, and not so much the real estate owners, but the businesses are probably almost all, or overwhelming majority are minority-owned. So, I guess the concern I have is that we have a process, and I'm not, again, the issue of reducing the density, I'm not here to question, but I'm here to question whether the process we set up allows for you to differentiate from the good actors and the bad actors. Thank you for your time.
Brian?
Lloyd, thanks for coming before us on this situation. I think this is part of a broader discussion on how we move forward, and I'd like to refer these comments and see if we can get a report back from the city manager and city attorney, refer to the city manager for reference into the broader discussion of these permits and any possible resolution from Mr. Ogul's client. That's my motion.
All right. Item 55, which is naming of a new dog park located at 3520 Hubbell Avenue as Reno Memorial Dog Park, and the dedication of such a dog park as park land, Council Communication Number 13-156, and it's noted here that there's already one in Ward 4.
I would like to recognize the significant investment in Ward 2 on this, though.
I would like to comment on that, that we have personal investment of $10,000 from Mr. Conlon, and we're going forward with hopefully a memorial wall for more memorials to be purchased. I hope you feel comfortable making them purchase of one, so...
I will definitely do that.
Okay. I certainly will move this, and thanks for the Parks and Recreation for moving this forward. We've needed this over there on our east side for a long time, and it's a good way to use FEMA land where we can't do any other construction that has to be used as a park, so...
I might just add, though, I think Ward 3 is about the only ward that doesn't have dog park now, so is that next on the list?
Yeah, I don't know.
You don't have a library? I need a dog park.
You have a dog park.
You've got one.
Downtown, but they don't think it's theirs on the west side.
It's totally theirs.
Feel free to come over and use ours.
Hallie doesn't have one. That's the deal.
I just want to make sure in the motion that Brian's promised contribution is...
I'm in.
Seven yes?
Item 56, preliminary terms of agreement with Randolph Apartments G.P.L.L.C. for the redevelopment of the Hotel Randolph and the adjacent Earl and Lay...
Basket.
Basket, we'll go with that. And the Youngerman Block Buildings located at the northwest corner of 4th Street and Court Avenue, 55 residential units and first-floor commercial space, Council Communication Number 13-157A, is the application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Enterprise Zone Benefits for the Randolph Apartments G.P.L.L.C. housing project in the Gateway Enterprise Zone. Anybody here to speak to this? We've had sort of a review of it Matt gave this morning. Any questions? Anybody ask?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to emphasize, because I know there's been a lot of discussion and chatter out in the nonprofit world about the individuals that actually live at the Randolph, and I just want to emphasize, I know that the developer, George Sherman, is really committed and has allocated funds to be of assistance to make sure that they're appropriately relocated, and I know from my perspective, and I believe from the rest of the council's perspective, there is 100 percent commitment that we will do everything in our power and work with all of the same providers that we've worked with before, when we did the YWCA, when we've done the YMCA, and there have been other projects. So, it is a priority to ensure that we don't have anybody slip through the cracks on this, and we're very aware of it and will be aggressive in pursuing that. So, it is a great project. It is, as we talked this morning, it's a loss leader project, but it really does span, or hopefully spurs, some significant development down in the Court Avenue district.
I want to underline this, and for the record, just maybe raise the temperature and the attention on the issue even more. This is a preliminary terms of agreement, and I will assure you, if this was the final terms of agreement, I wouldn't support it tonight. I don't think that we're far enough along trying to figure out how to relocate people, and just, and I know that each of you were copied in on a letter that I wrote to Greater Des Moines Partnership last week expressing concern about the cutback in things. By the way, he said he would come to a meeting today that he didn't come to. I want to make sure that the key people are very involved and committed to this. To that end, I just want to read you something that I wrote to the city manager in early March when I first heard about this. In a series of things that I brought up, here's what I said, and it still holds true, and it's imperative that we get to this. "I would like a detailed plan of action of how we will deal with the current tenants in the building. In order for me to support this project, I need more than future plans or talk or a series of ideas of what we might do in the future. I would like to know that all the players in the transition have already been engaged, that they're activated, that assessment has been made of the residents, and a plan of action has been implemented." Doesn't mean everybody has to have their place, but I said that a month ago or more, and I will move this along tonight, but it has to be. I will tell you, the other thing is that I had been told, and I want more information on this as well, even before the final plan comes back, we were told that about $1,000 was going to be available for the residents that had been there for a long time, but when you read the documentation, it says 250 to 1,000 based on different criteria. I'd like to know what that criteria is, and I'm not quite sure we will know how that criteria is really affected until we do some kind of assessment of the folks that are living there. How long have they been there? Do they have residency restrictions to certain parts of the city? And what do we do about that, which are complications that some of the other things that we've been through aren't there? So, I think this is a really important project. We've had it before us before, and it's been too cumbersome to get done. We're at the point where we can see the finish line, but how we treat the residents is imperative, at least for my vote.
I'll move item 56, 56A.
Item 57 is the amended schedule of fees for cemeteries, Council Communication Number 13-160. Anybody here to talk about cemetery fees?
I'll move.
Move.
Oh, Joe, did you want to speak now? It's done.
Joe, sit down.
Mayor, I'd like to quickly comment on this. I want to applaud the Cemetery Committee of Parks and Rec. for the work they've done here, and the park board, and park staff. I first heard about this last week when somebody received sticker shock, and when you go through this, you'll understand why, 60 percent increases, 66 percent increases. I understand why this is happening now, and I'm going to support it, but I'm hoping that this is something we look at on an annual basis so we have smaller incremental increases instead of $1,200 for a double plot. I think I have a feeling we're going to hear a little bit about this.
All right, we have two extra items. One is approving a allocation to the Municipal Housing Agency, Section 8 Administrative Account, not to exceed $250,000. I am the sponsor of this. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, earlier in this meeting, when you sat as a municipal housing agency, you voted to allow the housing budget to be submitted or certified on to HUD. We discussed at that time that some of the details with respect to the balancing of that budget were not addressed at that time, and that we would talk about those at this point in time. I also understand that at least some of you, maybe not all of you, are anxious to allocate dollars into this account right now and to solve the problem. I suppose the point is that you don't want to do that because it conveys the message that we can solve anything, and so that takes the pressure off. So, I have a suggestion for you, but before I give you my suggestion, I want you to understand what my concern is as your city manager, and that is that when we approve budgets and recommend them on, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that those budgets are balanced. That is, when you get to the end of the year, that there's sufficient dollars in there, and I don't think it's good practice not to do that. That said, I understand the points that you're making about not wanting to solve the problem in a very difficult situation, so I have sort of a suggestion for you, that you authorize me to set aside $250,000 of gaming revenues, not to allocate it to the housing fund, but to reserve it, encumber it, if you will, in a sort of reserve account that could be used for this purpose if no other solution is forthcoming. So, if we don't get money from another agency, or the county doesn't provide money, we've talked about getting funds from those agencies. If those aren't forthcoming, at least there is a backstop and a solution to that problem. In my mind, that addresses our fiscal responsibility, which is to make sure we have a way to fund this if it's necessary, but it preserves the option you wanted, at least some of you wanted, which was to make sure that we convey accurately to HUD and the community that there is a serious issue here. So, again, my...
Go ahead.
Well, my suggestion is that you authorize me to set aside the 250 in gaming dollars, not to necessarily allocate it to housing, but hold it there in a reserve in the event that we need it for this purpose and other dollars aren't forthcoming. That, to me, addresses our fundamental fiscal responsibility.
I think that's, I like that idea. So, if I made the motion, would it be to approve the city manager restricting a fund of $250,000 to be held and available, if necessary, to fund the budget gap in the Municipal Housing Agency, Section 8 Administrative Account?
Yes, Mr. Coleman, and I think if you would add to that, or at least it's my understanding at any rate, that we'll do our best to solve it from some other source. So, we'll make contacts with other agencies, or we'll talk to HUD, or we'll, you know, we'll continue to work on it. It's not, we don't have to have the solution today, but this puts something in place. There's a backstop. I feel like we're going forward in a prudent way fiscally, and I think we have that responsibility. So, yes, I think you said...
And I agree with the, I like the resolution that you've come forward with. I understand it eliminates Hartburn on your part and Scott's part, but I think it's just really important also, we talked a little bit about it this morning, that we communicate with HUD and our congressional delegation that this is a direct result of sequester. There's no question about it. I mean, because they don't understand that, and as we talked about in the meeting, you know, it's coming at all over the place, but they need to understand, and we need to be doing a better job of communicating with all the appropriate people.
That is entirely appropriate, and just for folks who happen to be at home paying attention, this is a Band-Aid that we're talking about, a stopgap. We have a long-term issue. It is created by actions taken at the federal level. They're not misactions taken by us or at the local level. They are a product of underfunding by the federal government, but it is incumbent upon us to look for long-term solutions, and there is a committee that has been formed by Mr. Coleman and other members of the council, which includes county members and others from the private community, that will be addressing that issue systematically, and I'm confident they will come back with solutions. So, with that.
I don't think you have to talk to the people at home on TV. They're all watching basketball now.
It doesn't start for another hour, so...
Is that what, it does not start yet? Oh, well, let's stick around then.
Exactly. The one thing that I think we all have to remember, those of us sitting up here, I mean, this, we don't deal with partisan politics so much. We deal with real problems in our cities day after day after day, and there are those that would think that these people that we're talking about don't really matter, and we know because we face them every single day. We face real problems. If there's a pothole, there's a stoplight that needs to be fixed. There's some people that need some help. That's what we're here for, and this council has consistently done that. So, I think your suggestion, Mr. Manager, is the right one, the message that, you know, we're still going to operate in a responsible fiscal manner, and we may, however, at the end of the day, moving forward, have to make more severe cuts into the program itself because we're not set up to fund it locally. It's always been a federally funded program, and our expectation is it should continue to be. All right, we have item two of our extra items. It's approving a license to the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation for the installation, display, and maintenance of a glass mural on Court Avenue, Stormwater Station, and associated intellectual property agreements for the glass mural and dango sculptures at the Hub Spot. This was put forward by Councilmember Hensley.
I'm going to move item number two, and just would like to point out the significant impact that the Public Art Foundation has had on the community and how they're working with so many of the different projects. That is just a prelude to asking for more money from the city. I mean, because they have really done an awesome job in making that $100,000 stretch. I'll move.
Six yes?
If we could have a motion to adjourn to the city council and reconvene as Board of Health. It's been moved by Hallie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. We now sit as the Board of Health. Our first item is approving the legal department to proceed with a court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. Our A number was not used. B, 1517 East 19th Street, it's fire damaged main structure. And C is 1542 30th Street. Again, it's a fire damaged main structure. Is there anybody here to speak to either one of these items? Again, this is for the legal department to proceed with court action seeking to abate the nuisance. Seeing no one, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't hear any opposition. Thank you all for attending.